Good evening and welcome to the Covington City Council for Tuesday, August eighth. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic and virtual options for public viewing and participation. That being said, I'm calling this meeting to order and to let people know Christina is joining us remotely. Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Soltis.
I am here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hartsack.
Here.
Councilmember Herjehhausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Pro temp Smith. Mayor Wagner.
Here.
We have a call, your honor.
I'd look for a motion to excuse Mayor Pro temp Smith.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to excuse Mayor Pro temp Smith. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sean's been excused. Everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. With that, I'll move to approval of agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, ma'am.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Well, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as posted. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. First up is we have a public communication. We have a presentation from King County Metro. Michelle and Amanda, welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm Michelle House and the general manager of King County Metro.
Amanda Pleasant Brown, who manages our jurisdictional outreach and coordination. It's really great to be here this evening. Going to spend a couple of minutes talking through Metro and where we are as it relates to Covington service, where we want to be and how we're going to get there as we continue to recover from COVID. Alright, so as you all probably know better than I, Metro serves Covington through a couple of different ways. The first is the Route 168. This connects Maple Valley to the Kent Station. It operates all day, thirty minute service from four AM to one AM and on the weekends from five AM to twelve AM. This route was revised recently in two thousand and twenty from our Renton-Kent Auburn area mobility plan and its ridership has seen really steady growth. It has about fifteen hundred weekday riders and eleven hundred, roughly a thousand riders on the weekend, which is phenomenal for this service. It's really productive. It provides critical connections to high equity areas. But we also do want to acknowledge that in this period of instability that we are facing, we have had to cancel three trips and we know that causes a lot of uncertainty for folks who are used to a more reliable one sixty-eight. And this, this cancellation pattern has been challenging for residents and users of that system. And we're going to talk about how we're addressing that in our September service change in a moment. But just acknowledging that when we are unable to provide reliable service, it has impact and folks make different choices for their commute and we want them to make Metro their first choice. So we're working really hard as an organization to bring stability back onto our system. So folks, when they look at that schedule and they see that trip, they have confidence that that bus is going to come. So we'll spend a little bit of time today talking through that. Metro is very focused on getting our ridership back up and part of that is to improve our reliability. So as we look to the future, we see some really bright spots here for our connections in Covington. We want to talk a little bit about Metro Connects today. This is our long-range vision that both has service and capital investments. It is currently unfunded, but it does provide the blueprint for growth about where we want to be as a county transit system. Metro Connects describes how we will work towards regional innovative and integrated mobility network that is safe, equitable and sustainable. This system will support healthy communities, thriving economy and a sustainable environment. What we all know is that in order for a transit system or mobility system to be effective, moving towards an all-day network is incredibly important. If you have that knowledge, that you have that trip that's coming with high frequency instead of just really early in the morning or really late at night, you can make transit choices in ways that you wouldn't otherwise. You can go to that grocery store, you can go to that concert, you can go to work and transit can be part of that because it's just a themeless way to make that mobility connection instead of really on a commute pattern. So what Metro Connects does is it provides that blueprint for that connected service where you have more of that all-day network and you have more connections to more regional zones. A long time ago, Metro is a fifty-year-old organization. It was really built on this, this hub idea, like go to the central business districts and really bring people from the suburbs and drop them into this and then bring them home at night. Well, we all know that through economic reasons and people moving different places and making different choices, that that's not the only way that people want to travel. They don't just want to travel into city centers in the same way. And there's a lot more of them as King County continues to grow. So we have a lot more regional hubs that we want to connect. We have a lot more neighborhoods that we want to have inter-neighborhood service so people can travel around where they work and live and play and not just have to go to major urban areas for that transit experience too. So Metro Connects really sees that and tries to build out how we know people live in their daily lives and it isn't just in a commute pattern. Metro Connects does consist of two networks and the first is the interim one. So this is two thousand and thirty. People say two thousand and fifty feels too far away. Where are you going next? And two thousand and thirty really is that interim plan to provide us some specificity for that. And this is where we're going to see some additional investments on our map for Covington. The interim network shows a Route fifteen fourteen extending, which is the extension of the Route one sixty-seven into Burien. Route thirty sixty-two would be a local commuter route connecting Black Diamond to Kent. Then in the longer-term vision, Metro Connects twenty fifty network also has an express route traveling from Auburn upstate Route eighteen through Covington up to Snow Call Me. Just imagine that. Imagine if that service profile was in your jurisdiction and just so many more different connection options for folks. These are draft concept routes based on what we know in service planning's understanding both from comprehensive planning, from growth and other cities' own plans. And when we get closer to realizing these, we will work closely with you as an elected body as well as the constituencies of Covington to really identify where and how this service investment should be realized in your city. So a lot more conversation to come. But we do want to highlight that we have vision for additional service and connection in Covington because as I see you driving around and having conversations with our staff, it's growing. There are changes happening here and we want mobility to be part of your city and the investment that you have for the residents in your city. So a little bit about where we are today. We have some vision for the future and right now I have been really beaten the drum saying that we're in a recovery mode. COVID really was a very unsettling time for transit where before COVID in two thousand and nineteen, we were trying to put as many people on a coach as possible so we could move them as efficiently as possible. Then for three years there, we had to stop doing what we know how to do best and we had to move few people to fewer places and in all different sorts of weird ways. And it also had a tremendous impact on our workforce and on our supply chain issues. So what I like to say inside the organization is in order for us to get to that vision, to get to that Metro Connects, that twenty fifty, we have to stabilize our system. We have to stabilize our system from a service delivery perspective. So people have that reliability I talked about. And we also have to stabilize our system internally so we can recruit the new workforce that we need. Metro must, much like the rest of the transit systems across the country, lost thirty percent of its workforce in what felt like overnight. This was for all the reasons that people made choices for their profession. We have a lot, an older workforce. We saw it really high. We are still seeing high retirement and attrition numbers. And folks moved. They moved around. They didn't make different choices about their live and work and it impacted us as an agency. So we are working really hard to bring those systems back into a more stable space and we're seeing progress there in one of the ways that we're seeing it is also in our ridership. Overall, our ridership is up, especially month over month. Our June average daily boardings are two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, almost two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, which is an increase of thirty-three thousand riders from the previous month. We still have a lot of capacity on our system, however, and weekday riderships are a little bit over half of our pre-pandemic levels. So we still have the ability to welcome a lot more people back onto our coaches. But a way that we would also see travel patterns changing is our weekend service. We're almost at eighty percent of our ridership on weekend. So people are using transit differently than before. A lot more choice for a lot different type of activity than just commuting. We also know that a telework environment definitely comes into play. So as people return to office or not, it definitely impacts Metro. So spending a minute on trip delivery, which is just another Metro speak to our service reliability. We are seeing, let me make sure, in July, we delivered ninety-three percent of our scheduled trips. We were hovering at right around ninety-four for the previous month. What we're really seeing there in that dip is a lot of vacation. July is a really high vacation month for us historically. We've clearly returned back to that pattern. So our trips have fallen a little bit in the month of July. We're keeping a close eye on this as September service changes right around the corner and we want to ensure that our numbers come back up and get closer to that hundred percent service delivery. As with, as I mentioned previously with the Route one sixty-eight, we have been doing some pre-cancelled trips. So we know the service out on the street is more than the workforce that we have to deliver it. And if we continue to do a patchwork approach of delivering, it's very complicated for the customer and it's very complicated for us to do that as an agency. So what we're doing is taking a three-week look ahead and saying, we have this number of folks that are available due to pre-planned vacations and picked work. So this is how much service we can deliver for those three weeks. And that's how we're managing our system until the September service change. The September service change is really when we're going to reset those balances between the service profile and the available workforce. So moving to the fall service change, we are on September second, we do service changes twice a year, March and September. September second is our fall service change. This is a temporary reduction of a hundred and fifty thousand hours. So this really is the level setting of our workforce to our service. That on scale, that's about three point eight percent of our four million hour service change. So it's, it is a small amount, but it has great impact if that happens to be one of your buses. This decision was made inside the organization with a lot of care. We knew that we have a lot of work to do to get our workforce appropriately onboarded and into the organization and we needed to provide some certainty for the public. So again, for Covington, in September, you'll start seeing more reliable one sixty-eight because it still is in our service profile. It is not part of our reduced route that, that will be coming into effect. We will be temporarily suspending twenty peak routes and reduce service on twelve others. But again, that is not the one sixty-eight. So service beyond fall, two thousand and twenty-three, our goal really is to stabilize and then it's to build back. We are not permanently shrinking our system. We are not cutting these service hours out. We're simply reserving them until our workforce numbers and our ability to deliver that service comes back up. And then what we want to do, what we are planning to do is reinvesting those suspended hours back into those areas where they were removed. So that is our goal and we are excited to get there together with the jurisdictions. We're going to be monitoring really carefully also the travel patterns of those jurisdictions where we removed service so that when we reinvest it, it matches the patterns of where people want that to go. So that is also something that we'll work really closely with you all on as well as communicating the information and also when we're ready to reinvest, what it looks like to meet some of those targets. So let's talk a little bit about our service and workforce initiative. So understand a little bit about what the agency is holding ourselves accountable to inside Metro in order to provide our service for you all. We've done a lot of work. Traditionally, we have been a fairly siloed organization where bus operations does one thing, planning does another, vehicle maintenance does another. And in this time of uncertainty, we recognized we really needed to have larger conversations. Where were our pinch points? Where are our systems that used to work for us not working for us anymore? We're an old government bureaucratic organization. We've got a lot of layers. Let's put them all on the board and see what we can do to fix the situation that we were in from a workforce perspective in particular. And we started with recruitment and we did a lot of analysis, a lot of lean, a lot of efficiency work with each stage of our recruitment. Is this necessary? Do you have artificial barriers? Is it sequenced the right way? And we were able to shave a lot of days off of our recruitment timeline. We also recognized during that process, we were going to the wrong places to find the people that we needed to find. We were sort of just saying, yeah, we're open for application, come apply. But we weren't proactively going to spaces, to job fairs, the way we needed to, to community colleges that we needed to. Being really welcoming and saying, we're, we're going to remove all these paper, you know, application barriers for you. Come work for Metro. Here's all the good things that you can realize when you become part of the Metro community. And so that sourcing change also really helped us. And what we really saw is that we, and you'll see it on this next slide, we actually have we've done a lot of really good work in recruitment. We are really able to say now that we don't necessarily have a recruitment challenge the same way that we did before, especially for operators because we have developed really, really great pipelines. So now what we're trying to do is get them through training faster. We then identified another pinch point. So in our training program, we have already doubled the number of classes. And so we're training roughly thirty to thirty-six operators per month. And we recently had a two-day workshop with community transit on best practices and additional ways that we could invest in our system to move the training pipeline faster. Small example, CDLs. State of Washington does a CDL program. It's the license you have to have to be a, to work for the port, to work for Metro. There's a lot of other classifications where a CDL is important. Well, Metro has the most CDL requests of any organization in the state of Washington and the state of Washington also has a workforce shortage. So is there another way for us to get a CDL program inside of our organization recognizing that we have such a volume? That's the kind of stuff we're trying to unstick together and we're working with partners along the way to make some good progress. So, and I'm just going to make sure, is this slide, this one here? Okay, good. Just making sure so I can speak to it. What you can see in this slide in front of you, we always have a lot of different information points that we like to, to talk to. The lines here really represent where we're trying to be in September to get to the workforce that is able to provide that stable service for September. And what you'll see is that we're close, we're making progress, but we're not quite there. However, the caveat I will say here is that for the past year or so, Metro has been relying on a higher level of overtime to deliver the service. And when we layer in that overtime number on this projection, we are able to deliver that service. So we are hitting that mark. But I will say, we're not hitting that mark because we've arrived at our operator count. We're hitting that mark because we are still going to ask a lot of our employees and we will continue to work to get our operator numbers to a place where we don't have to rely on such high overtime. We all know that's not a work environment that we want that, that has some inefficiencies from a system perspective. It's expensive and it's also not the safest way to have your service provided. So we are going to continue to, to go on that process to bring those counts back to where they need to be, but we are able to provide our operator service with this information that you see here. So a lot of really good work underway to get us in, in the right direction. The other piece that we'll notice is we're still seeing some trends on Monday through Friday. A lot of, a lot more people calling out, calling in sick on Mondays and Fridays. That's a trend that we see in a lot of different spaces here, especially in the really nice weather of the summer. So we'll be keeping a close eye on that and seeing how we can manage our workforce so that we don't continue to have those heavy callouts on those two days. So again, just a couple of examples of how we're trying to manage our own systems and also the environment that we are in. And similarly, for fleet availability, I'll say two, two different caveats here. For operators, it was more of a process and procedure that we really had to identify. For vehicle maintenance workers, this is different. We don't have the same level of available workforce for vehicle maintenance workers as we do operators. This is a highly skilled group of folks that have to have some credentials and some training as they come into the organization, especially as we move to electrification. It's a totally different type of skill set and the competition for those green jobs right now is fierce. So we are definitely having a different recruitment challenge with vehicle maintenance workers than we were with operators. So here, what we're trying to do is have a multi-pronged approach, both for the near term and for the long term. Pre-apprenticeship programs, two years and four years, work with junior colleges, work with high schools, get our pipeline earlier so that people choose us before they have some competition with the Boeings of the world. Do some advancement programs inside our organization. Make, make training available for people who might be interested. If they're a custodian and they want to go be a vehicle maintenance worker and they're inside Metro, great, let's create a pathway and avenue for them as well. We also want to be competitive and so our, our recent tentative agreement with ATU gives us some really specific tools for our vehicle maintenance classification. And this is going to also be really helpful for us as we continue to recover. And what you're also seeing here in the mechanic workforce and then additionally in the fleet availability is we do have a supply chain issue still happening for us. A couple of months ago, it was about fifty-two weeks for a radiator. The fact that I know that and that that like is on my radar is something that's a challenge to shows just how hard it is for us to secure some of those stable pipelines. Transit industry a couple of years ago, maybe a decade at this point, moved to a just-in-time model for supplies. And that meant that they didn't have a lot of inventory on stock. And so it was a just-in-time, just when you called them, they would sort of make that choice about where to put that thing. Well, that, that broke during COVID. That model totally broke. And we, along with other transit agencies, are all looking for that same product that there's not a lot of inventory for. So we're working really hard to see where we can be in people's queues for prioritization for those specific parts that are really important to us. So both of those things really come into play on if we have enough coaches available for service delivery. We're making really good progress on mechanics. Again, it's harder. We do have some open recruitments right now and we're hoping to bring six more folks into the organization. But we do have some more work to do to shore up those pipelines for the future. Luckily, our fleet availability, we were seeing some real struggles. I don't know if folks remember the winter time, first time in thirty-two years that Metro ever had to shut down its entire system during the ice storm. Right choice, but you can also imagine what some of those weather events did to our coaches, right? That is all those chains on our system, all that ice, it, it takes a toll on the fleet. And then right on the heels of that weather event was a new flyer recall for steering column. So right at the end of the year, when we were starting to see this challenge emerge for us as an organization, we had those two events happen, which meant a lot of coaches were offline and we needed to reinvest in getting them back into service, but we also had that work for shortage at the same time. We're making our way out of it and we now are closer to our target goal for September and we are seeing good progress. We've done similarly a lot of really good work, moving coaches around our bases and doing things that we'd never thought we would do. So congratulations to the vehicle maintenance team on being really creative and thinking outside the box for a service that can be really complicated for us to manage. So really proud of them for that work. And more, more is still needed as we move to the September service change. We are going to do our best to continue to provide that quality service for the writers of King County and for Covington. So please stick with us. Please give us your feedback. We provide monthly updates to the Regional Transit Committee, which Covington is well represented on, as well as to the King County Council through the Transit Economy and Environment Committee. And anytime there's a question you have, please reach out. It is incredibly important to maintain these really good communications with the cities that we serve in this region. So I'm going to stop talking and see if there's any questions.
Council, have any questions? Jennifer.
First of all, I really appreciate you at least appearing to enthusiastically embrace the challenges that are ahead of you. Looking at those, those graphs, I do see there's a lot of work to be done. But one question, the proposed route for two thousand and thirty, does that go past Kent Lake High School?
At this stage, we would say, let's take that down, right? We don't have the, all those stops firm and that's exactly the type of communication we would want to have with you all when we do the specific alignment is to see those important milestones.
Yeah, so a lot of kids in Covington, including ours, some of ours up here, go to Kent Lake High School and not just Covington, but Kent. Kent Lake also pulls from the Kent area. So having a stop out there would be extremely beneficial and provide some much-needed equity that has been brought to our attention over and over again by youth council, school district, et cetera. So.
You bet. Some of our greatest successes from a service perspective have been serving high schools. It is creating a new generation of writers. We have free youth fair till nineteen. We have service in areas where folks might not have any other mobility option and it really does provide a benefit for the whole family if transit is provided to those youth. And so we take that very seriously both in our planning because we recognize just how important it is in so many ways for our system. So that will definitely be part of our consideration.
Okay, that would be great because it is way far from Kent Kangley and I do know some of those kids walk it and yeah, it's, it's a hall.
And we are a mobility agency. So if we might not be able to fix it with a fixed route bus all the time, we also want to provide other connections like right, our mobile Metro Flex and other ways that we can really put out some mobility alternatives, even if we can't make it with a whole fixed route bus.
Okay, okay. Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Couple of weeks ago, my son took the one sixty-eight all on his own down to Kent Station, which was one of those like, hey, I did it when I was ten, so good for you doing it at sixteen. But the thoughts were, because it was, my, my wife and I were talking about it as we picked him up from Multi Care just over here and we live on the exact opposite side of the city, is that there is an inequity of service for the one sixty-eight as it only, for anyone who wants to take it, they either have to live in Timber Lane or along Kent Kangley. Is there any talks of putting bus routes along two fifty-sixth in Covington, which is our other main thoroughfare in the city to get people to Highway eighteen or even out from two fifty-sixth to two fortieth, which is the end of our boundaries, making it easier for people who may not have ways of transport, transportation to get from one of the city to the other so they can go spend half an hour to get down to Kent.
That, that very specific question, I'm going to get back to you and we'll send you a note to follow up on. I'm not quite sure if that's in the planning world. I also know that from a system perspective, when we saw the amount of growth that was happening in south, southeast King County, we also recognized that we didn't have good service for that and we still see that. You see that with COVID ridership and where our service is, there is a lot of demand and not a lot of awesome service. And also with the land use patterns and sort of infrastructure that's here, sometimes it can be tricky for us to come and create some of those connections. It takes a little bit of service investment for us to make it happen. It's a fantastic question about the two fifty-sixth. So let me ask it.
And I, I would say that it, right now with two fifty-sixth needing some, some extra love from when it comes to paving and expanding, it might not be the best bet to do it right now, but it is something that I think we should be looking at at least for that two thousand and thirty route as well.
Okay, great. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Our city, along with the city of Maple Valley, had voiced concern about not having a bus route available for our two cities going east on Highway eighteen out as far as the I ninety interchange. We have a lot of residents in both of our cities that commute to the east side for Microsoft and the, the large casino out there. So I haven't seen anything. I, I sit on the skateboard and I haven't seen anything that would indicate that that has been addressed or looked at. Do you have any ideas?
Yeah, there is an active conversation happening around that whole interchange, that I ninety service profile, the congestion that's happening as well as casino service, sort of breaking apart all the different ways that we could address a myriad of mobility challenges in that area. So really active conversations. I haven't seen a draft plan per se, but I know folks are meeting both with external stakeholders as well as internally. So I will provide an update with you on that. It does take a little bit more time than one wants for some of these things to wash out. And I think there's also a really important conversation with the state to be had as well around that interchange and some of the traffic flow and mitigation efforts that need to be had on I ninety.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight and thank you for the possibility of future routes servicing Covington. And thank you that you're watching what's growing down here with Lake Point coming on in the next two to five years. The bus route on Highway eighteen, two fifty-sixth with a parking garage in Lake Point would definitely help with the ridership. The buses would help with ridership out of Covington and stuff since there is currently only one route. So, but thank you very much for being here tonight. I really appreciate it.
My pleasure. Anytime. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. Oh, no, I didn't see a raise your hand. Next up is, no, we did not. I'd watch for the hands on the screen. Next up is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, please press unmute if participating virtually or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in city hall and or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting is prohibited. With that, we'll call Mr. Frank Sutton. Welcome. Been a long time, sir.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I've got some bad news for the city of Covington. I live on one seven zero two five Southeast Wax Road. And I represent myself. The thing I'm going to bring up is the problem with Jenkins Creek. The back of my property abuts Jenkins Creek. My property is fairly high since the guy that built the property used filter, but on either side of me, the the creek comes up. Right now, the creek is up about fifty feet on both sides. And on my property, it's up about twenty feet. The problem is there's a great big tree across. I don't know if it's the only problem. But there's a big tree across Covington. Or pardon me, Jenkins Creek. And I think it's creating a sort of a dam. Okay, now the problem with that is when you raise the water level around trees that were on the bank. It makes the ground soft and since the trees don't have deep roots anyway, it tend to fall over. And this has already happened to one tree on my property. Now, I personally can't do anything about it because of the environmental rules, but the city can. And so right now on either side of my property, the. The properties are flooded up to about fifty feet from the creek where north peak was. Okay, if this isn't resolved before the rainy season starts, we're going to have major flooding. Okay, now I'm downstream from the new park and upstream from the bridge that I'm coming to the way. If that breaks loose or it isn't done carefully, then you're going, you could end up damaging the bridge. Okay, so that's what I came to tell you. I'm an engineer, so you can take take that with your consideration. So I gotta say.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. We'll make sure that our team, while they're here, so they.
Well, so they did take a look at it. I'm just trying to. Raise your awareness of the the criticality of this thing. It's not going to get better and if you don't address it pretty quick, it's going to get a hell of a lot worse. French.
Thanks, Frank.
Yeah, no problem.
Paul Curtis.
Paul's here for new business.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anybody else in the audience wishing to address council? It will move online. David Cottle, welcome.
Hi there. Good evening, council members. I have lived at the address two seven zero one zero two oh six Avenue Southeast in Covington for over thirty two years. And based upon my strong desire to live in a neighborhood and community that is clean, safe and thriving. Thank you to provide my input comments regarding tonight's agenda item on consumer fireworks. Based on the November twenty nineteen election advisory ballot vote on fireworks in Covington. The city council approved an ordinance to ban the sale, possession and discharge of fireworks of any kind. This local law wanted to affect December tenth, twenty twenty as part of CMC Chapter fifteen dot fifteen. Climate change and consumer fireworks are linked in several ways. The production, transportation and use of fireworks contributes to greenhouse gas emissions and air pollution. Fireworks release harmful chemicals and pollutants into the air and water, potentially harming the ecosystem. Additional wildfires sparked by fireworks can further contribute to carbon emissions, damage property and hurt wildlife. There may be a consideration to allow consumer fireworks in certain areas and cities of Washington State. Why are they still considered dangerous? Many people may not have the proper knowledge or training to handle fireworks safely. A sad thing is that you can turn some consumer fireworks into illegal fireworks by altering or changing its usage. Sparkles sparklers bundling with tape can turn them into an I N D. All fireworks contain explosive material that cause burns, eye injuries and other serious harms not handled properly. Fireworks can be unpredictable and malfunctioning can shoot off in unexpected directions, starting fires or posing a risk to bystanders. Young children and pets are especially vulnerable to injuries from fireworks, not understanding the potential dangers or being able to avoid them. During July fourth celebrations, people may consume alcohol, impairing their judgment and increasing the risk of accidents with fireworks. In twenty twenty two, the use and sale of consumer fireworks were banned for the first time in unincorporated parts of King County. Duval and North Bend are the exception cities in King County where it's considered legal to set off fireworks. This makes it even more complicated to communicate to the public and to enforce. For example, in North Bend this year, there was an emergency proclamation that aerial fireworks, helicopters, aerospinners, bottle rockets. Were immediately banned in city limits, which came in response to the extremely hot, dry weather, which had left North Bend with a very high risk of fire danger. According to U S Forest Service, residents receive a two hundred fifty dollar fine for each violation of aerial fireworks possession and a seven hundred fifty dollar fine for discharge. The community needs to be aware and responsive that the use of fireworks is dangerous to property, parks, wildlife, pets and families. More importantly, we need to consider our veterans in the community who suffer from PTSD. This may not affect all, but I know when fireworks are used, it is one of the hardest days of the year for them. Also consider those who suffer from sensory issues. They unfortunately can't hide from noise and resulting toxic air quality. The ban on fireworks is a matter of public awareness and understanding, as well as the city's ongoing responsibility to provide necessary communications for laws, rules. And the likely enforcement when they are broken. The fireworks ban should be continued to be strongly supported by both the Covington City Council and the King County Council. It can be difficult to ensure that consumers are following safety guidelines and regulations when using fireworks. Just because it isn't easy to police, this doesn't necessarily mean we should make it easier to allow consumer fireworks. I know many people love fireworks. It's been a tradition, but times have changed since it's now more dangerous. Former city council member Moon stated it well in twenty nineteen and these direct quotes. Residents are not following the laws around fireworks, so a ban may be what the city needs. The problem with the situation right now, it's difficult to determine if people are using legal or illegal fireworks. And it's difficult to enforce because you have to see it happen, so a ban would be easier to enforce. A respectful and responsible Covington citizen would not use fireworks today with the knowledge of why the current law is in place. Please do not open Pandora's box to consider allowing permitting consumer fireworks in direct conflict with the new King County ban on fireworks. I really do not want to see the fireworks ban change for the city of Covington. Just don't do it. Please, I wish to continue to live in my neighborhood and community that is clean, safe and thriving. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there anybody else wishing to address council during the public comment period? Seeing nobody raise their hand, there will be a second opportunity towards the end of our meeting. Next is the consent agenda. Before we move into that. Counsel, before we make a motion, I do need to recuse myself, so I would like counsel to. Have our most senior person, Joe, be the acting mayor. For just the consent agenda item for a motion and a second to. Move forward on the consent agenda. With that, I am going to recuse myself and Joe, you'll take over for that. Oh, first off, this council approved to have Joe handle the meeting for this item. Just for this. Joe, it's gonna, well, it'll take me several minutes to even get out of chair.
All right, before we have the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C six, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, or is there a second?
A second.
Okay, there's been a, it's been motioned and seconded. All. Everyone four, say aye. Any opposed? Someone let Jeff back in so he can do do this better than me.
Thank you, counsel for that. Next, let's move into new business item number one. Aquatic and Recreation Center Planning Project Update and discuss which two initial design options be refined and further developed. Ethan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, the city has an aquatic center that is. Getting close to the end of its useful life and it's also struggling to meet the community demand. And over the last couple of years, we've been studying what type of solutions we might have. This year, we've been continuing that effort, looking at. Either a renovation and expansion option of the existing site, as well as a replacement facility at a new site. Tonight, we will provide an update on this project so far this year. And then we also have kind of a decision to make, which we'll kind of introduce towards the end of the presentation. Here with us tonight, we have Paul Curtis, who's with A R C Architects. Paul and A R C Architects bring a tremendous amount of experience on projects like this. With public facilities and especially aquatic and recreation centers. So with that, I'll kind of hand it off to Paul to kind of give the presentation.
Hello again.
Thank you for being here tonight.
And make sure I'm getting this right here. Okay. Well, thanks for having me here this evening. I'm with A R C Architects. I'm a principal at A R C Architects. Emily Wheeler and I are heading up this effort on our side and we are joined by a group of professionals who. Are helping us study the, make an assessment of the existing facility. That builds off of the two thousand eighteen conditions assessment. And then another group of professionals who are helping us understand the intricacies of the town center site. We have structured our team in large part by bringing folks from the previous studies. Onto the team so that there's some continuity and that we're hitting the ground running with these efforts. Our mechanical, electrical and civil engineers were all part of the two thousand eighteen effort. And our planning and our aquatics design group is was part of the. Twenty twenty one effort, which involved studying the combined Maple Valley and Covington Aquatic Center. It's not quite right, but. So this is just a quick overview of where we're at in this process. And so we started with taking off from the program that was developed in the twenty twenty one program. And refining that, knowing that the service area has changed. And Covington will be going this effort alone and so working on how that program might change. And once a desired program was established, we then started looking at how that might fit on the two sites that were to be studied. Town Center Site and the existing Aquatic Center Site as an expansion. We then started building on efforts there and. Put together a rough order of magnitude cost estimate for designs for those two spaces. From a site design standpoint as well as from a building design standpoint. Thank you for picking that whoever that was. And so that sort of brings us to where we're at today, which is task number four. So we've got the design sort of set for three options. One option for a renovation of the existing building and two options for how the town center site might work out. And it is there that we will have a question for you at the end of this presentation. As how best to use the tasks that we still have in front of us to study two sites moving forward. We currently have three. So continuing, this is just sort of a summary of how we got to where we are today. We did start with the program that was identified through significant outreach during the twenty twenty one efforts. And knowing that the service area is now smaller for this facility, at least the primary service area. We do intend still to draw people from roughly the same space, but the primary service area is smaller. And so we looked at sort of stepping down of how that program might be more tailored to Covington in particular. And so we use the same program, but things like, for instance, the gymnasium, that could be a double gym. That could be a single gym with a walking track around it. And so we sort of came up with these different stepping down of how big the facility might be. And we identified large, medium and small options. Then through a series of meetings with the parks and aquatics teams from the city side, as well as our planning group and our aquatics design group. We were able to land at sort of what was a preferred program option, which was sort of the medium option, which was about sixty five thousand square feet. That's total building area, not just program. And then we proceeded to then test fit that onto various sites. Alongside of this process, there was also significant public outreach taking place sort of along these various steps. There was, of course, the twenty twenty one public outreach, which was extensive. It included surveys, it included. Individual interviews with user groups and stakeholders. And then we have fallen on the heels of that with multiple surveys out to the community. Sort of confirming or identifying issues that we need to shore up as we move through the design process. And then we attended the Covington Days Event and shared there. Kind of how things were progressing and got real time feedback at that event. And then we have two additional surveys scheduled for October and November and an additional in person. Sort of at event attendance in between those two. And those three outreach points are rather significant. Because the decision today will sort of affect how we move through those processes as we move along. This is just an example of the first survey. This one was really hitting on at a very high level. Which site location was preferred relative to where people are living, where would they be willing to drive to? Where would they be willing to go and do their aquatics recreation? And then the second question, we were already starting to have an understanding that the existing facility. And the existing site, more appropriately, would not house some of the program elements that were in the preferred program. One of those was the gymnasium. So this question was really getting at how important was the gymnasium to the overall package of things? That was to help identify sort of the importance of that aquatic, existing aquatic center site. So this is just a summary of kind of what I just explained. In general, the new facility outpaced the existing facility in terms of interest in that survey. And dry land features, including a gym, were quite popular. Part of that second question there. And then I think important to note, drop in and and sort of. Unorganized recreation swim opportunities for families and just recreation events was a very popular thing. And that is also a difference between what the existing site can accommodate versus the new site. So that will play into the question at the end. These are images from the Covington Days Event. And we shared essentially one kind of representative option from each of the two sites there. We had four hundred and fifty to five hundred people come by the booth over the course of those two days. And there was a lot of the responses were driven to the survey to. Log their interest, but sort of anecdotally, it seemed that more people were interested in. The new site, the town center site, as opposed to a remodel of the existing facility. This is survey number two. This is, we really wanted to kind of get a more detailed idea of the prioritizations. Of the different program elements. And I think notable here is that the recreation pool and the gymnasium and the walking track. Which are all distinguishers between the existing facility and the existing facility remodel. And what the new site would be able to accommodate all fall within the top five. Places in this survey. This is a summary of what I just stated and and then the existing site assessment. An assessment of the existing building took place. In order for the existing facility to best align apples to apples and accommodate the preferred program. There is, this is what I would call a heavy remodel. This is not getting in and trying to selectively reuse certain spaces. The entire west end of the building is sort of lopped off and new construction occurs there. So in a lot of ways, the assessment became a sort of a second tier. Element to the decision making in the sense that all of the electrical will likely need to be replaced. Much of the mechanic will likely need to be replaced. On the structural side of things, big update there. There was significant concerns in the two thousand eighteen assessment about. Uh, there was significant concerns in the two thousand eighteen assessment about the about the capacity to meet code for the existing T beam uh concrete beams in there. And uh it was sort of a thought that maybe they would not be able to be uh upgraded without completely replacing the whole roof. And that would be cost prohibitive to really doing anything with that uh section of the building. Uh, a solution has been identified that is a lightweight solution. Relatively cost effective and something that we would be able to have access to when the roof is re-roofed anyway. Uh, so there's some efficiencies there. So that problem is essentially solved. Happy to ask or answer more questions about that if there are any. Um, okay, so this is just uh sort of an idea of how the existing Covington Aquatic Center would be remodeled. Again, you're sort of left with just that orange uh portion in the middle, which is that is really just the existing natorium. And then sort of a donut shaped addition is added on all sides of that. And again, the goal here was to try to get as close to a comparison of what could be built on the new site as possible. So that those two programs are um easily compared in an apples to apples fashion. Um, this is just, this is the interior in a lot of ways. Uh, the layout of the building is much as it currently is. Um, with sort of the pool farther in and the locker rooms and administrative areas up towards the front. The big difference here is that there is an entire uh second floor added in that front west portion of the addition, which is in, which includes uh fitness areas and meeting spaces and sort of a large uh community room. That is another point of distinction is not as large of a community room as would be able to fit on the new site. Um, this is just a conceptual image of what that might look like. This is not designed. It's just at a feasibility level to try to understand what could happen there and in a representative way of other things that could happen there, how much would it cost? Moving forward, this is a similar, similarly sort of developed to a feasibility level option for the town center site. The team has met with uh the town center advisory group within the city a couple of times to share these and get feedback and make refinements. Um, essentially, the the building program is significantly larger than the previous master plan accounted for on this site. It's a different building. It's bigger. Uh, so we sort of ended up with two viable options there. One that keeps City Hall, a new potential City Hall on the same site. Because the building is now, the recreation and aquatic center is now larger. If the city hall stays on that site, it has to become a three story structure in order to fit the same program that we're sort of trying to compare. A three story structure is more expensive to build. It is probably a little bit more expensive to operate. Um, but we think that this design works out quite well. Um, it is the same program that you saw previously with the exception that this one has a large gym. Uh, it has a large recreation uh pool and it has a larger social hall. And I'd like to go back for just one second. The the property line is where that red dash line is on the right hand side of the of the image there. And so while when we were initially studying this, there was some discrepancy of where that property line was. We felt that we could get a larger recreation pool in there, which is what's shown. Upon finding the property line location to be farther closer in, uh, now I think it's questionable whether the payback of the effort that it would take to remove some of the existing building elements, which are concrete elements, there's serious elements that are in there, the filter, the backwash pit for the pool. Some of these are major components of the pool. Um, in order to move those is the bang for the buck there to do a smaller rec pool, which you can see it would be significantly smaller if the end of the building where that where that is. So that's another consideration. Um, and then, and this is just a conceptual image, again, not designed, but just starting to get an idea of how that might sit on the on the plaza and the scale of it. Again, this one is a three story option. Um, okay, and then by way of contrast, a one story option for that facility on the town center site. Um, this, because it now takes up more real estate on the plaza, uh, the city hall is moved to an adjacent piece of property immediately to the sort of um lower left of your image there. The idea is that still, it still takes place in the plaza environment, but it is immediately moved off the site, but the edge of it sort of helps still create that plaza. This would be less expensive construction. It's one story. And again, it it fits all the elements of the program. Um, this is a interior, um, really the idea is that the building is sort of opening up to SoCo Park immediately across Wax Road there. This is just another image. Again, this is, the scale is different. This is much more at a sort of pedestrian scale to one story building. So here we are, these uh, this is sort of circling back to the steps where we're at right now. If we were to proceed as previously planned, we would be eliminating one of the two town center options. And then using these final steps to study, further study the existing renovation site or the town center site and compare those two. The final steps include um creating an operational plan, what it would take to run the building and what it would cost to run the building and payback for those costs. Um, it would include uh some reworking of the recreational pool. If the existing buildings site were to move forward, that's to make it smaller and really get an understanding of what we could squeeze in there. It would be difficult. Um, and uh continued public engagement to verify as we move forward, that if through the different steps of that we're making the right uh decisions. And then um, once a final uh option is identified, a more robust cost estimate, what we've done so far is sort of a rough order of magnitude cost estimate that compares the two. This would be much more of a detailed cost estimate broken out line item by line item. So it is those steps that we would then use to inform one of the two directions going forward. Uh, one of those is to continue to study and I and narrow down to one of the two town center sites and the existing site. The other option is there has not been a great deal of public interest in the existing site. It does not can, you know, it does not handle the gym. It does not really handle the rec pool very well. Um, and so another option is that instead of eliminating one of the town center sites, we now eliminate the existing site. And we focus on kind of differentiating and seeing if there's ways that those two uh buildings can uh that it would be worthwhile to study those in more detail. Certainly, the operational plan would uh come out differently for a three story building. You have more staff kind of spread out more throughout the building, uh more capital cost in terms of a three story structure is just going to cost more. Um, and I think that we could also uh sort of sort of study a medium and large or medium and medium, large option by sort of focusing on that one site and and uh try to get some benefit out of things that way. That is where we're at. Ethan, do you have anything to add?
No, I think we're just kind of, you know.
Thank you. Um, I think we're just looking, any questions you have, we'll certainly take those, but then we're just looking for direction as to whether to continue with evaluating one uh option on each site or whether to pivot and eliminate looking at the existing facility and look at two different options on the new site.
Thanks, Ethan. Uh, we'll take questions first. Christina.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I loved all of it. I do have one question. Um. I I noticed that you have a a drawing of a three story and then there's a drawing of the one story. Has there been any consideration to do a two story with the city hall staying in the location that we're looking at right at the picture that we're looking at right now, one of them?
Um, I think the priority going, when we began was to try to have the programs aligned so that they're sort of easily compared between the options. I think that that comment goes to what I said, sort of right at the closing statements there, which is that we could definitely look at a two story option. It would have a diminished program relative to what is shown now. Um, but I think that would be an interesting way to sort of distinguish if we were to move forward and study two options on the town center site to distinguish those and have sort of a a medium, small option.
I see. Okay. So it would, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't hear that closing statement. I thought I was listening. Um, it would actually take away from some of the services. Thank you.
That's correct, it would.
Okay. Thank you. That's the only question I have.
Thanks, Christina. Joe.
So if if you can go back a couple slides where we had uh option two for the uh one more. Yeah, that one. Have we looked at, and you said this, the aquatics rec center is one level or one story? Have we looked at having this one story? And then building a second story and City Hall being above the rec center?
No, but I think it's a great idea.
Cause it it I, someone correct me if I'm wrong, where City Hall sits in this picture, do we own that land? So already we're going to be having to do land acquisition to do that. I think because we can, I think this option here is a great option. If we could put City Hall as a second level or second story on there. It already would be more square footers than we have in the current City Hall. I think that'd be a good idea. I was just wondering if we should maybe look at that option as a possibility as well.
Can I, can I chime in real quickly, please? Uh, just one, I I want to make a clarification that uh on on this diagram that you have, uh, City Hall is still on the city owned parcel. It's just on the other side of the street. Um, and so he's just showing kind of the plaza section of the parcel. There's actually on the other side of the street room for additional parking as well, whether that would be a parking structure or something. It just hasn't been studied and fleshed out yet.
But we do own it. We do, and that street is one that does not exist currently. So that might be what's throwing people off.
That that might be it, but I I think uh in all honesty, that um, I'm not saying because of the smaller footprint, but I think because of the ease of access that we have everything all at one, one spot. You're not asking and we could do something else with that spot in there for retail, food, entertainment, something to that extent.
Thank you.
That was one of the other things I was thinking of too, because I know we're talking about, we're talking about expanding our programming. Regardless, if we move forward, we're going to have way more, even if we don't, even even if we do a modified or a shrunken version of what we're proposing, it's still going to be much more than what we've been able to provide. I was thinking along the same vein. Uh, you know, maybe if City Hall was in that other iteration of the the three story, for example, does City Hall become a two story separate building where we have some more of the community gathering spaces? It's still going to be very close to this recreation center. And it might behoove not to have basketball courts right next to where we're having a meeting or something like that, right? We talked about some of that noise. Depending on the use, so. Um, I'm I'm just wondering if that was something that was considered as well as we're trying to figure out. I, when I see the iterations of this project, it was a pool and then it was everything but the kitchen sink thrown into it. We were expecting maybe a bigger partnership or a bigger service area. And we're talking about maybe pairing that back with the potential of adding later. If if we do a a a two story version, I mean, have we talked about what the potential will be to expand in the future if if that's approved? Or which option would give us the most opportunity so we could at least get something going?
Yeah. So a two, if I'm understanding correctly, if we build a two story option now, it is very difficult to add another story on top of that later. You could expand elsewhere on the site by expanding the first story outward. Um, but because code changes so regularly, you can even plan for a second stor- a third story now and you unless it's within a year or two, you're sort of going to be uh having a hard time upgrading that structure to accommodate a third level. Um, the other challenge with that is that a lot of these spaces are sort of two story wide open spaces already. And then natorium, the gymnasium, there's no columns really coming down in the middle of that to help support uh something on top of those. Um, so for instance, in this, in the three story option, um let me go back, the, there's nothing on top of those spaces because it's very difficult to add that weight and still span across the whole gym, for instance.
So but if we did, if we did a two story version, there would, it would be a smaller footprint and there would still be property available to add. Either expanding the one level out or adding another two story. I'm I'm just trying to think about the appetite of and I know we're not at that level yet, but.
Yeah, I should clarify. If if this site were to be selected to move forward, there should be a whole master plan study of this. Um, at the feasibility level, we have a little bit of kind of, let's try to make sure this is going to work. Um, but there really should be more study on this site in particular, if that becomes the selected site to move forward. And so I think those kind of options should all be available embedded at that time. Um, I think what we, because we're not even pricing the city hall. We just want to make sure there's room for it if that is a is a desire of the city to have the city hall on the same site or immediately adjacent. In a lot of ways, they function similarly in that regard. So anyway, I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, it does. Um, and just a few more if I might regarding the existing site.
Yes.
If that ends up being something that's decided to um, um, let go of, for lack of a better word. Are there plans of maybe turning that building into something like a gymnasium or some other community room? I don't know if that's been discussed, so it may not be a pool, but something that can be more easily modified or what we would.
I'll mostly let Ethan answer that, but.
The other stuff that we might have.
But I, but one of the benefits of it, which I neglected to mention, but thank you for bringing it up, is that if the existing site were to go forward, there would be twelve to eighteen months of construction time in which it would be completely unusable. If the new site were to go forward, that could remain in operation. Service to the community would be uninterrupted until it's switched over. And then what happens to that building is a good question.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just speak to that briefly. I mean, um, we haven't really gone down that path to really discuss what would happen to that site other than I think in all previous discussions, the idea has been if we do something at a new site that we wouldn't be operating a pool there.
Well, I'm talking about even just anything, like it doesn't have to be a pool. It could be a room for parties rentals or something. I don't know what what it would look like.
Yeah, I mean, it might be an expensive renovation just to accomplish that with an old facility that's at the end of its life. Um, I probably, I mean, we haven't studied it, but I think it might be the best thing to walk away from it if we've got a new facility to run.
Thank you.
Question, this is probably for um Ethan or Regan, but i- is it tr- correct that the land that the pool currently sits on is owned by the school district? The home school district.
It is. Yeah, we're currently negotiating a new lease agreement with them. Um, but yeah, the the building belongs to us. It used to be King County's that got transferred to us, uh, but it's always sat on school district property.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I see your hand, Christina. I'll get to you. So going with this one story or three story, the town center. Either solution, just what you said is we'll have to do a study of the what's going to fit best on that site. They both have a running track in it. I didn't see that in the, because we went through that.
They do both have a running track. The existing site, because it does not have a gym, would not.
The other problem with the existing site, if you expand it going east, you have a hillside, which creates even more architectural issues, which I know you've studied.
Yeah.
In my personal opinion, I would like us to consider the sites of the town center and not even consider renovating because if you renovate, like you just said, the existing site, it's going to be closed for twelve to eighteen months and we don't want to do that.
Yeah.
So my personal opinion is I think we should move forward with whether it's a one story, three story, but consider moving forward on the town center site. As far as size, As far as size. I know that we did a joint venture um feasibility study with other partners. And they've dropped out. I still feel that we should move forward. Because. Once this is built. There's going to participate, even though. Those major partners didn't want to participate. Residents of not just that city, but surrounding area like you had in the map. Would still. Use our facility and I I don't want to see us. Minimize that. I want to see it build it. I know it's a saying, build it and they will come, but. I wanna outnumber what I, what your concept here, even the one story. To me, looks like what a YMCA down in Pierce County looks like. And we need that ability here in Southeast King County.
Agreed. It's much needed for sure. That is something that we've heard in spades um from all of the public outreach. And just to be clear, the program is very much aligned with what came out of the twenty twenty-one study. It's just that. A room that was identified in that study uh could be smaller than it was in that study, but the actual activities that could be housed there. Are still able to be housed.
Thank you. Christina.
Thank you, Mayor Wagner, for stating what you said. I was going to as well jump the gun and say that I am in complete support of. Just discovering this new site, the town center site, and exactly what we can do and just focus our energies there. And do the studies as far as what would be the most efficient or be the most profitable and attainable. For our city. Um, we are growing and. We are more attractive than ever, and I think it'll just keep going. And at this space, if we have. This new facility, I think it would be a really. Big gem of Covington and. Thank you.
Uh, I'm I'm in agreement that I think we, as much as I uh do like. Or love our pool, because I it's where I learned how to swim. It's where my son learned how to swim. It is. We need to look at other sites because one, one, we can't have twelve to eighteen months without services there. We we. Lived through a few months of that with COVID and. You know, we're now getting. Back to the place where we could have been in twenty twenty without COVID. Um, I think. But I also think that we, when we're looking at the town center sites, we should be. Looking at the one sto- the one-story plan with it actually becoming a second story with City Hall on top as an option and seeing what. I I understand that would be a little bit more expensive, but it might be. Saving us money and not having to build a second building altogether. So uh I think that should be an option in there, but looking at the town center plans is my thoughts for that.
So I agree with um the. The other council members that are um indicating that their preference to to uh walk away from the existing site. Like another key reason for that is the parking issue, which will would never get better. It would only get worse and it's. It's not our property. It's just another. Bother me that, I mean, even though we can get a lease, it's still not our property, but I think the parking would just continue to be a problem, so. I would be in agreement as well to focus on town center.
Thanks Debbie. So we've got the four council members that choose to do town center. Uh Jennifer Beth, do you want to weigh in?
I would, I'm totally fine with looking at some of those options at the town center.
Yeah, agreed. Uh, location-wise, town center makes complete sense.
So consensus is to just consider um or just to focus all attention to the town center. And come back with options. What else do you need from us, Ethan?
That's it. Thank you, great.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Uh Paul, thank you very much for coming tonight and giving that. Um, it's very, this is a very. Passionate topic for us and greatly appreciated. So thank you. All right, next is new business item number two, the Covington Climate Vulnerability Assessment Binding, Selena.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm gonna give a brief introduction. I've got. Lisa Greeter and Ben Silver from Burke. They're gonna be leading the presentation tonight, but I want to just give a brief introduction. Quickly, what you've seen your agenda tonight is that we're gonna be talking to you about the climate vulnerability assessment. This assessment came out of an eighty thousand dollar grant that we obtained from Commerce. To be quite honest, I was hesitant to obtain that grant just from a workload perspective. But you know what? That decision turned out fruitful because as we learned in the last legislative session, HB. Eleven eighty-one was passed, which basically says cities must have a climate. Element in our comprehensive plan update. So while there is a little bit of a timeline when cities have to comply with that. We are going to be able to do that as part of our twenty twenty-four update that's underway now. So um. There's quite a few deliverables that are coming out of this grant. We're gonna give you uh Lisa and uh. Ben will walk you through kind of the the overarching themes of what came out of that assessment. But in the packet tonight, you have the full document that was already submitted to Commerce because we had a deadline. Um, and then I included the 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 Cliff Notes, I'll call them, that we provided to the Planning Commission when they also studied this. Uh, last month or a couple of months ago now. And then um, there's actually a really cool spatial model. I don't know if any of you had any time to go through and. Kind of noodle in that, but that's really great information that we've never had before and we're excited to. Parlay what came out of that spatial model with the work that our GIS team is also doing. So. I feel like we're really kind of elevating some of our decision-making abilities in the future. So a couple of other things that I just wanted to point out um that. This was through the eighty thousand dollar grant. We're gonna be able to put that into our COT plan. Um, so there's a lot of good work that's gonna be coming ahead. The document you have is still in draft form and that's for purpose. Because we're gonna kind of be working on this as we start to infuse those policy and goal directions into the comprehensive plan. So I'll kind of pause if there's any immediate questions of me. I'm gonna hand this over to Burke and. Lisa, I think you or Ben can share your screen as well, unless you need me to.
Uh, I can do that, yes.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you, Selena. And thank you, city council members. Um, Ben and I are pleased to be here. I'm gonna start off with our presentation. I hope you are seeing our slides.
We can see your slides.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so this uh bullet list gives an overview of what we plan to cover, which I think Selena did a great job. Um, sharing that we're gonna cover a bit on climate trends. Ben will cover the index we created, which is that interactive map tool that Selena described. A little bit on how we approach the vulnerability analysis and next steps for using the information. As was mentioned, uh this. Effort fulfills a commerce grant and its focus was on climate vulnerability. Um, and it's meant to. Respond to HB eleven eighty-one and fold into the comprehensive plan. The new requirements in the um, the law were to add a climate element. That addresses two sub-elements, uh greenhouse gas emissions reduction sub-element and a resiliency sub-element. When we did our work, we took note of a tool that. The University of Washington Climate Impacts Group put together based on a state legislative ask over a year ago. And they they put out a information that shows trends in each county in the state. And so on the screen are some. Highlights of that information and some some things are are more scaled to Covington and others are countywide. But in general, um, the. The trends by twenty fifty are that we would see an increase. In the average summer maximum temperature and an increase in the number of days that are above ninety degrees humidex, which is a humidity and heat. Index. And that's important for public health purposes. And then there would be um likely a increase in the number of high fire danger days, so reduced moisture. And increased fire potential. And then in terms of extreme precipitation and flooding. There's predicted to be a. Increase in the change of magnitude of different storm events. Some of which are also important for just um storm water system design. An increase in peak stream flows, um which means more areas could be flooded. There's been some. Mapping of that to different creeks in the county. And so the the percentage change in Big Seuss Creek and Little Seuss Creek is um thirteen percent. Increase. And then in winter, there would be less stored water and snow, which eventually would mean um. Lower stream flows in the summertime. Um, which could affect fish. Um, and so the values mapped in Covington for the same two creeks are a little bit different. Less flow of minus five percent in Big Seuss Creek and minus seven percent in Little Seuss Creek. So we looked at that regional information. As well as any local information we could get. So these trends are sort of the big picture trends um by twenty fifty. And then where would we most feel these um changes could be in areas with high impervious surface. And less tree canopy called urban heat islands. So those are those red areas on the left-hand side of the screen. And and then in flood hazard areas, if if there was um extreme precipitation and greater peak stream flows. It might change the boundaries of. Of the flood plains um. Or it might flood more often. So I'm gonna hand it from here um over to Ben, who's gonna describe the index a bit more.
Thanks Lisa. Uh, thank you, Council, for having us. Uh, my name is Ben Silver. I'm a spatial analyst with Burke. And as Lisa mentioned, I'm gonna talk about the climate vulnerability analysis and the index that we developed. We developed this planning tool to really take a look at. Sort of a high-level view of how vulnerability to climate change uh might might vary within the city. We are limited in the sort of data that exists to support. Looking with this level of granularity, um as Lisa was just talking about. Many of the trends we see are at the county level or even regional level. As data improves, we we hope that that can get a little bit better, a little bit higher resolution. But I'll talk through what data sources we used primarily look primarily to look at. The impacts of extreme precipitation and extreme heat. So this slide is showing the framework with which we think about climate vulnerability. Uh, we think about these three components of exposure, sensitivity and adaptive capacity. Exposure, those attributes that identify uh the degree to which people and things are exposed to climate change. So these are really the climate stressors. Uh, sensitivity are those things that are inherent in a population that might predispose them. To increase sensitivity to climate exposures. And adaptive capacity attributes are those that. Frankly, might just make a a person or place have a lower capacity to adapt to these changes. So we combine those together and create this overall view of climate vulnerability. So. I'm just gonna go over the steps of of how we do this. Um, an index is really a way to bring together many dissimilar types of data. So we bring together these different data and indicators that are related to understanding climate vulnerability. We developed our list of indicators through literature reviews. Looking at similar studies and working in previous efforts with the UW Climate Impacts Group. Um, we group these indicators into the the three subcomponents of exposure, sensitivity and adaptive capacity. Then we standardize that component data again, so everything is scaled similarly. So we can take these dissimilar data points, have an apples-to-apples comparison. To look at the relative impact. And then we create component scores for sensitivity, adaptive cap- capacity and exposure and combine those all together. Resulting in a this high-level understanding of climate vulnerability. Go to the next slide, please. So just another way to frame this, I'm looking at the Venn diagram. You know, we have these three components. So what we really want to know is where is the overlap? Where are areas that might have increased exposure, might be more sensitive and might have a lower capacity to adapt? Exposure, in this case, we're looking at extreme heat and extreme precipitation. Sensitivity are aspects like uh age, being younger or older, certain environmental characteristics. As well as certain health attributes. And adaptive capacity traits are those like socioeconomics, transportation and a few more you see listed there. So I'm gonna take you through the series of maps and this is a way to show how we build this picture of vulnerability. All of this data is scaled to the US US Census Block Group. Geography, it's the smallest geography that uh we can get much of this data. And some of the data is not natively at that geography, so we do different analytical techniques to. Present it at the block group level. So exposure are are two proxies for extreme heat and extreme precipitation. Lisa showed you these maps earlier of where the actual features are, but. Looking at the urban heat island impact as well as where flood plains are, in this case, both one hundred and five hundred-year flood plains. Um, we summarize both of those individually, standardize them and then. Add them together to form this look at an aggregate view of exposure. So this is grouped into simple buckets of higher and lower uh vulnerability or exposure rather across the city. And you start to see sort of where areas might have a little bit more exposure than other areas. Again, this is a relative look across the cities. It's not an absolute measure. Next slide. Similarly, we look at sensitivity. In this case, there are a few more indicators, looking at age, people that are younger and older have more susceptibility to the impacts of extreme heat. As well as extreme precipitation, certain environmental characteristics can. Increase sensitivity to those to heat and precipitation, as well as certain health conditions we've seen in the literature are linked to. You know, extreme heat and extreme precipitation as well. So again, we standardize these. Add them up together and get this sensitivity sub-score on the right-hand side here. Um, and I'll just note that all of this is in the the interactive tool that we provided. Um, and and you can click through and see these different layers as well as all of the component indicator layers as well. And lastly, we have the adaptive capacity. And and again, these are traits that. May make a community or people uh have lower capacity to adapt these impacts. Um, and instead of sensitivity where it's unlikely for those to change. These, the characteristics themselves might be unlikely to change, but there are perhaps policy or other ways to. Ameliorate the effects of them, things like linguistic isolation and living alone uh might make a person. Less able to get the information they need in an emergency or uh extreme climate event. So there's different outreach techniques you could use to increase accessibility to those people. So same story here, we combined, we standardized these, combined them all together to get the adaptive capacity sub-index score. And then we take these three scores together. And form the overall vulnerability index. And on the left-hand side, that will show a couple of ways of visualizing this. On left-hand side again, it's just those scores grouped into these five buckets from higher to lower. You see areas in downtown, southwest part of the city that start to pop out as more vulnerable. Um, and areas to the east of the city towards Maple Valley, slightly less vulnerable. Um, again, highlighting this relative look. An important way to to think about this as well is. Where does it line up with where people actually live? There are population characteristics. Within the index itself, but we want to know how this. Uh interacts with with population density. So on the right side. This is called bivariate mapping and I I'm gonna walk you through it because it can get a little wonky, but um. There's basically two color schemes going on here. In the more pink areas, you have higher vulnerability and lower population density. In the more teal areas, you have higher population density and lower vulnerability. And where it's darkest, in the purple areas, you have both higher vulnerability and higher population density. And those aren't necessarily the areas that are either the most vulnerable or the highest density, but they might be the areas where. Relatively, those are both the highest and thinking about. You know, another lens of that Venn diagram I showed earlier, if we look at the areas that are most vulnerable and then overlay that. With where people live. Um, you get this view on the right. So this was a a part of the broader vulnerability assessment. Um, again, it's it's a relative look. It's really a way to. Understand with the data that we have available. What might the geographic variability be? And and a tool that'll say, look here. And peel back the onion a little bit and say. Why is something popping out? You know, is there strong urban heat island effect? why is something popping out? You know, is there strong urban heat island effect here? Or is there, you know, stronger concentration of people who are sensitive in this place? Um and with that, I'll pass it back to Lisa and she'll talk a little bit more about how we've used this tool and and how it fits into the broader assessment.
Thank you, Ben. Selena touched on this in the beginning, but uh the the city can use these efforts in a number of ways. Um as it's updating um reli- relevant plans or efforts um around emergency management. Um then for certainly for the comprehensive plan, it's informing the the land use plan and the goals and policies. And um and then the idea is is as Selena mentioned, to share this with the public um through spatial mapping and data layers. We also took a look at the results and and the literature to consider strategies that might be a fit for Covington that have the effect of adapting to climate change or reducing greenhouse gases. Um and there's a a number of uh strategies here on the right hand side. Um and some of them in the green area um have a role in both um adapting to climate change or reducing greenhouse gas. And those are the the particularly um uh important ones um to take a closer look at. And so it could be s- simple things as um you know, protecting or adding more trees. Um working with stormwater techniques that that um that improve natural um hydrologic um systems. Um it could be retrofitting buildings to be more energy efficient. We thought we'd walk through just a couple of examples of how we were using the results. Um and and one is in parks, open space and food systems. Um some of the guidance material from the Department of Commerce is to address one or two goals and policies for about eleven different sectors. One of them is around um food systems and and open space. Um and so you can build off of policies you already have. And so you have an existing policy about access to healthy, affordable local foods. You could add to that other policies that get at resilient park design and add up adaptive vegetation. Um and you know, you could look at at other ways in which you could address um some of the findings of the the vulnerability assessment. So where would you focus your investment in trees? It could be increasing tree canopy in heat island areas such as in downtown. Um and and there could be other things that you could uh address. Similarly, for transportation, um some of the vulnerability assessment looked at existing risks um about uh where there could be more frequent landslides as a result of increased um precipitation. Um i- increase in flooding and where where the culverts or roads or bridges might need al- alternative design. Um there might be increased maintenance and so on. Uh there could be some um improved connectivity within and uh abutting Covington um across different modes, um including active transportation, that's pedestrian and bike and transit. Um and then some other strategies that that are partnered at DEA DEA who manages your um transportation model. Um they were suggesting some transportation system management and operations strategies that are a combination of using the infrastructure you have and improving it um and and addressing demand management. So it's kind of an all in one um type of strategy. For zoning and development, um you have some good policies around creating connected dynamic urban environments. Um there could be uh an idea to take a closer look at flood hazard areas and look at your current code and um what uses are abutting in the flood plain to see if if um some adjustments should be made in the way the city manages the flood plains. Um and and other techniques that reinforce um placing more growth in areas that are less vulnerable or places where you can invest um more easily and uh ad- adaptation measures. And then emergency management similarly, um you have some good policies around um providing for public spaces and um communication. Um you could identify areas where you could have coordinated public services such as in a resilience hub um or other techniques um to manage. Um and so uh other strategies are identified that the state and other agencies have identified as particularly high performing. So tho- those are the um pieces that we wanted to share with you and we wanted to um see if you had any questions for us. And we we've posed a couple of questions here that we've asked the Planning Commission and the uh Equity and Justice Commission um as we've been doing our work. And so I'll just pause right here and stop sharing.
Does counsel have any questions for Lisa, Ben or even Selena?
Yes.
Um hi Lisa. I think when you were talking about the summation, you sounded like you were giving some an- analysis of where we were at with our current policies and how uh am I understanding that that's what you were saying? What do you think would be one of the biggest things that we could do to improve our climate resiliency?
Well, you're you're right. Uh we did do an evaluation and that's part of the Commerce Guidebook. Um the Department of Commerce was asked to put together a guidebook, working with six different agencies. It was part of a legislative proviso. And so the recommendations for local governments are to look at your current policies across eleven different sectors. And so we were hitting some highlights um of some of the findings just in four of the eleven. And uh some of the the themes that go across several of the sectors um would be around active transportation and trying to have uh redundancy in how you connect um roads and non-motorized. Um adding uh tree canopy is another one that that kind of cuts across a few of the sectors. Um there are others as well to to consider. And as Selena mentioned, we're uh considering it a draft vulnerability assessment and planning to do more um integration of the recommendations into the draft plan that ultimately comes before you.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Uh Lisa and Ben, thank you for a very good presentation and update on this. Greatly appreciated. Nobody else has any questions. Selena, is there anything you need from us?
Uh nothing, nothing at this time. Uh you will be seeing this information uh come back to you when we dive into the comprehensive plan. So we'll be pointing that out along the way.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I really believe that this needs to be in our comprehensive plan. Um considering like what you Lisa and Ben brought up about the higher temperatures during the summer. Luckily, this year we didn't have as many, um but it doesn't say we won't have them in the future. So thank you for being here tonight and presenting. Have a great evening.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa and Ben.
Uh next is new business item number three, consider a resolution on the two thousand twenty-three annual comprehensive plan amendment final docket. Selena.
Okay, good evening. We are theming on comprehensive plan tonight. So what you, I have a brief presentation um that I'm going to walk you through just um to get grounded in what the docket is. And then we'll we'll talk about what came forward as far as applications. So this is just a brief overview of what I'm going to talk about quickly. I just also want to point out the um the 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 tagline there in the bottom. This was one of the images that the Planning Commission, the Arts Commission settled on um as far as the theme that's going to go through the comprehensive plan. And I dropped another one in here too. I'll point that out. We're going to start infusing this as as we go. Um so what is the the comprehensive plan docket? Let me move my in here. Um so in short, the the docket is a requirement under the Growth Management Act that basically says, cities, you have your comprehensive plan and at least once a year, you need to open that up for the public to give suggestions on what they think they might want to change. Um and then also at the same time, cities are allowed to propose those changes. Generally, cities can propose those changes as needed. So sometimes when we want to do a pol- a code update, sometimes we've got to make sure the policy is in place, so we end up doing both. But um it's really just an opportunity for um the public to give feedback on that comprehensive plan. And then what it does by creating this one kind of time for us to look at that, then then it really provides the context for us to look concurrently across all the elements to determine if in fact this proposed change or amendment to the comprehensive plan is in fact aligned with the overall comprehensive plan. Um this, the the state law kind of leaves it up to the cities on when and how we open the docket. Um and then whether that docket needs to be opened that year. So I will actually be coming back later to talk about how we're going to manage the docket through this comprehensive plan update because it is quite a bit of effort and lift of staff time and and um work that goes into this process. So more to come on that. But getting back to what the docket is, ultimately, those applications are submitted to the city. The staff does an initial review. We give that to the Planning Commission. They do a review on the applications received. Then they hold a public hearing about what should go forward um as far as the proposed docket. Then we take this proposed docket back to the council. It's a bit of a ping pong game. We take it to the city council, you then set the docket based on what items you want to study to move forward. And then it goes back to the Planning Commission where they do the full study, hold the public hearing, do the public outreach on that. Then their recommendation comes back to the city council for a final decision, then ultimately infused into our comprehensive plan. So what where we are tonight is um the Planning Commission reviewed the docket. They held a public hearing. What you have before you tonight is ultimately what they suggest should be on the docket. Um so just a little bit about what that amendment is. So I will just state that the city received no public amendments requested. Um that docket timeframe is actually opened for sixty days. So we opened it in, I think, March or February. We closed it about mid-June. Um so nothing was received. That's advertised as per usual, um meeting all those those legislative requirements for the docket. What we did receive though was a city initiated amendment, and this is for the Parks and Rec Department. So Ethan's team submitted this. And the reason they submitted this change is because right now in our twenty fifteen comprehensive plan, we have information about the Parks Department and their pros plan. Okay, so we adopted that in twenty fifteen. Well, then the Parks Department just went through a pros plan update. So now these two things do not align. And in some cases, that's okay, right? But why it matters is that when you have impact fees, you collect park impact fees, your capital program and your comp plan elements have to be aligned, right? So Ethan did this pros plan, his team did this pros plan, they came up with a new capital, they came up with a new impact fee structure. That doesn't reside in the comprehensive plan, so we can't take that information and really start to implement the fee that's identified. So we're going back. What we're going to do is we're proposing we adopt the the pros plan by reference into the existing twenty fifteen. We'll get that cleaned up and then that will also become probably our first element for the twenty twenty-four update as well. Um obviously, we'll get more into those nuances with the planning mission and when this comes back to you. But that's ultimately the purpose of this application. So if we're getting kind of a two bird, right? So part of part of what Ethan and I talked about was, can you wait? Just wait until we do the twenty twenty-four update and then we'll catch up with the impact fees. But because there'll be about a twelve to eighteen month delay, that doesn't give, you know, that that pushes their impact fee update back further than maybe we intended to be. So in order for us to to move that timeline up, we have to make changes to the existing comp plan, the twenty fifteen, the existing one we have now. Those changes will parlay into that twenty twenty-four update. So we'll continue to adopt the Parks Plan by reference. So that when they do an update, we should be compliant. Um so also, once a- as part of the decision process for can and should the docket item move forward, the code has a series of requirements that are outlined. And I just briefly identified them here. Um ultimately, the the proposed amendment does meet, you know, that this is required by state law because RC eighty-two oh two oh two oh requires that alignment for impact fees. And then ob- there's just an obvious technical error, right? We want to make sure that we're up to date in adopting our most current strategies within our comp plan because that also informs other information. So for example, how this is also important is if a project comes in and our comp plan, the one we have now, shows a trail, but that that trail is not in the pros plan, then we're not really aligned on what we're asking the developer to do. So we want to always be looking at the most recent needs of our Parks Department when we're looking at our land use planning as well. And then this is just kind of a a summary of where we are as far as next steps. So the Planning Commission reviewed this information. They held a public hearing. We didn't have any public input that was received as part of that public hearing. Um the Planning Commission had a discussion about it and they recommend that the council place this on the uh twenty twenty-three comprehensive docket um according to the Growth Management Act. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions.
Counsel, have any questions for Selena? All right, seeing none, there is the potential for a motion to adopt a resolution setting the two thousand twenty-three final comprehensive plan amendment docket according to the requirements of the Growth Management Act. Counsel, wish to take action.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Beth would like to speak to your motion.
I think Selena stated it beautifully. If things are not lining up, we need to make sure we have all of our ducks in a row so we can continue to move forward and fund our capital projects as we as we see fit that we've already.
Beth, I'd like to speak to your second.
And thank you for the great explanation. I learned a lot through this this. Um I I also remember that a techni- if we consider it a technical error that we're not in alignment, that that qualifies as one of the conditions under which you can do what we're proposing tonight. And in in doing what we're planning to do tonight, we would be able to change our fee structure at an earlier date than possibly later. So, okay, that just clarifies my understanding. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution setting the two thousand twenty-three final comprehensive plan amendment docket according to the requirements of the Growth Management Act. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Next is new business item number four, discuss the city provision on the sale, possession and discharge of consumer fireworks in Covington. Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I'll just go through kind of briefly what got us to this point. Uh council adopted uh ordinance prohibiting the sale, possession and discharge of fireworks in the city of Covington on December twentieth of two thousand nineteen. That took effect December twenty twenty. It's a year waiting period per state law. At a city council meeting in September of twenty twenty-two, there was council consensus to bring this item back, which we did in uh January of this year, January twenty-fourth. At that point, council asked for this to be brought back for further discussion on a modified fireworks ban. But you wanted it after July fourth. So that brought us to here to discuss a modified fireworks ban. You asked that we provide uh the city of Tuck Willa's uh modified ordinance uh call for service statistical report. And uh we have that for Covington and Tuck Willa and then Washington State laws regarding fireworks. Those are all attached in your packet. So this is just for discussion for Council tonight and if you want to direct staff to do anything regarding modified ban.
Does counsel have any questions? Any comments?
I have lots of comments on bans and how we I and how I don't like them. Um but I've noticed something since we've banned fireworks. Seems to have gotten a lot louder since we banned them. And I I say this because we were now asking, we we have residents who are well meaning. I I firmly believe that. We have residents who took the ban and said, yes, we're not going to get fireworks now because we can't or we don't want to drive to uh Snoqualmie to get fireworks from the reservation or North Bend to get fireworks from a stand. Or we don't want to drive to Muckle Shoot to get fireworks from the reservation. Uh but then we have people who used to buy fireworks from the stands that we had here in the city are now driving to Snoqualmie, North Bend or Muckle Shoot and getting fireworks. Uh I know um it's I've stated it before. My neighborhood, when we, before the ban, we My neighborhood, when we before the ban, we were very cautious with what we did. We had more fire extinguishers out there than needed, plus fire, plus hoses. But also since the ban, um, my neighbors have gone way more out to Muckle Shoot and gotten way more. Bang for their buck, lack of better term. They didn't always when that was like when we had the ban. So I I think we need to really consider doing a more modified. Because as we've seen, things are. But I saw Mark raise his hand. It was Christina. Sorry. I was like. But uh, I think we need to do it more modified because, and honestly, we have. Made something illegal that we can't enforce. We couldn't enforce it before the ban. We can't enforce it now. And if we need any more proof that bans aren't working, our fentanyl crisis is a pretty good cause of that. A good way to look at that too. So. I'm just, I think we need to really modify this ban. Yes, I know what the vote was in twenty nineteen. Yes, I know that a lot of people have very passionate opinions on this, but. It seems to have just only gotten louder on the Fourth of July. Um, granted, this was the first year. I didn't see any emails. I'm sure somebody saw emails. I just didn't see any come across my inbox. I think they they've all learned just to send everything to Jeff.
Phone calls at two A M.
Sorry about that. I was really tired and you were the first one to come. Uh, sorry. Uh, but I think we should. Really consider it and for any other reason than. Safe fireworks for sale in the city is better than people driving out to Muckle Shoot and getting the ones that are completely unsafe. Or safer fireworks eh for sale in the city, I should say.
Thank you, Jim. Christina?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, one thing I have learned over the years is that not every action. Bestows the the reaction that we may expect or desire. And while I understand the intent. Of banning the big things, the the things that make my windows shake, my house shake. Um, and and really the without sounding insensitive. Th- there are are um our veterans, our pets. And the things that get them upset are the things that have not stopped. That's it. And as much as I would have hoped, if if it was something that if we if we came back and said statistically. Look, look, the calls have gone down, the booms have gone down, everybody's happy, this is working. I'd say, great, it's working. But if we look at statistics, um, our calls have gotten greater. And I would agree with Joe. I would say that the the families that really enjoyed the little things are gone. And they're going elsewhere. By the way, I had the opportunity to talk to several families on National Night Out, and I asked them specifically. I said, what did you do on the Fourth of July? And many of them left the ci- well, a- all of them left the city. But that didn't mean that they didn't shoot off fireworks anymore. They just went to a different place where they were legal. And where they could enjoy. Fireworks. I don't know what kind they were shooting off. It's none of my business. Um, I would encourage for us to learn. From from, you know, twenty nineteen's resolution and we didn't have that modified band ban. Eh as an option, we just we just didn't. And I think that's where I came back last time and I said, you know, had we had that, this would have been a fair. A fair vote, um, an accurate vote, but we didn't have that. And what we really took away is those families' opportunity who. Who didn't violate, who didn't um send them orders and the M eighties and the M nineties. That are still happening and worse than ever. W- we just took their opportunity away to to show some patriotism and have the things that would be safe. Um, if we look at statistics of of Tukola, for example, the house fires did not go up. The accidents did not go up. So. If anything, they went down with their modified ban. And I would, I'm not, I'm not here to step on toes of of people who have voted. But I am here to encourage. What we, an option that we didn't have in twenty nineteen. To be um looked at and to be considered, um, so that. Our our residents and and the only ones that are, the well, I shouldn't say the only ones, but the ones that are really upset. Are rightfully upset because those things, the the things that are going off right now currently that cannot be maintained and cannot be banned. Are upsetting me too, big time. Uh, they happen all night and I do not like it. But um, if we were to invest and just. Consider what has been successful over the last couple of years in other cities? I think maybe we can get both sides to a more middle ground and happier. Um, those are my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christina. Anybody else? Jennifer?
Um, as an individual, I voted to keep fireworks. As an elected official at the dais who represents the residents who came out and voted. I will not support any change to what the voters decided. The end.
Well, I'm also resistant to go against what was voted on. So as a representative of our residents. I don't believe that we should open it back up, but there are other reasons. But I am worried that people would not know where to draw the line. It takes a great deal of education. I understand that it's worked for Tuck Willa. I had so many complaints this past year. And I think that I would get the same number of complaints. Just out of perception that because we opened it back up. Residents will feel and believe that that is leading to. More illegal fireworks. Um, I. I I don't know what to think of our statistics. Um, we, I mean, it was just kind of an odd year, I think, for for the police department. We only had Adam driving around trying to track down people and and that doesn't work. I I'm also just really curious, had um the woman that came to us from her organization.
Katrina.
Katrina, thank you. If she had not come to us and said, this is what's working in in other cities. Would we be discussing opening this backup? Um, I wouldn't be. I mean, I I would not have thought of it.
I think probably one of the biggest considerations that we are all concerned about is safety. And I all I can say is that in our neighborhood, um, we didn't have to deal with the remnants of paper. E- even people in the best censums trying to clean up, it still sticks around and it was much quieter for us. So we didn't have the same experience Joe had or some of the other um communities possibly. And I think it gets back down to. The boom booms and the thing, the things that really set people off are still happening. They were never really legal to begin with. Even when we had a fireworks ordinance before, it was never legal. And because people were continuing to do illegal activities. Uh, the the vote that happened in twenty nineteen. Um, and it was the way it was worded to. We had some people that said it was an all or nothing thing and they had to pick one or the other. They couldn't go down the middle one. So I, while I agree that um, yeah, it was a an advisory vote that was given and council made the decision that. Given the best tools they had at the time, we did get feedback that there were, it was confusing valid measure. All of that's to say, we had, we heard from um. Uh, David Cottle this evening, and he did summarize a lot of the reasons why we need to consider. I I'm more concerned about what the police officers have to deal with. I'm concerned about fire, uh, and I'm concerned about litter. Uh, and the noises are gonna happen as they happen. So I think for me right now, I'm. In a in alignment of continuing the status quo. I'm always open to talking about changes, maybe in another year or two, we look at it again. I don't know. But I did have a com- and I and I don't mean that to be like opening a can of worms, but you can't just. We can't always just say, set it and forget it and never look at it. Like, that's not prudent. But um, I did go to one of the um communities for National Night Out. And they were talking about how maybe we could do a drone show, or maybe we could do something at Lake Point, or I mean, they're not building homes there yet. Maybe there's an opportunity to have a community show or some other options that we could still celebrate, but maybe not on an individual level. We do it as a community. So I think there's an appetite out there to look for different ways to to be patriotic that wouldn't. Um, potentially catch someone's house on fire, catch the trees on fire. Cause I and I'm really, I mean, really, I'm looking to chief to go. I mean, it's, you guys are bearing the brunt of a lot of what's going on. And so. We don't want to make it worse, but if there's a tool in our toolbox that then you have actually an opportunity to to stop somebody doing something that is hazardous. I think we should keep it the way it is. I'm. So I'm fine. Status quo for now. I know that's a lot of words, but I had a lot of thoughts about it.
Oh, I'm very torn because. I'm a pyro at heart with fireworks. I've used to throw fireworks displays and stuff and um. I've looked at what Tuck Willa's done and what Auburn has done, or what Auburn has always had with the, if it blows up or goes up. It's illegal, which is a modified man, and it's kind of working for them as well. I, David Co- I don't know if David's still on, but I appreciate what he came and spoke about. So um. I don't, I'm leaning towards modified ban, but. So that brings to a tie, so we'll have to bring it back to uh when Sean, we have a full council here in September. To discuss it, um, because I also agree. I understand what Joe's saying that if we had the. The safer fireworks, maybe people wouldn't go by the more dangerous ones. But it's still like what Debbie and has said, if you start relaxing on a current. Ban, then people will start thinking everything's going to become legal on a future date. So. I guess that was not even as clear as mud, but um.
I just have one one question and because I'm just, I'm just keep staring at our our call stats and everything. It, is there a way to determine if any of those calls were duplicate calls from the same household? Just just a curiosity, because I don't know if that's even possible. It it is possible. Um, we do get some calls about the scene incident. I I mean, just anecdotally, there was probably a lot more fireworks and there were calls. I think many people gave up on calling. Uh, you also can't even get through. Uh, our uh communication center very easily on that night because there's so many fireworks calls from every jurisdiction that King County services. So it's possible there were a lot more that gave up and hung up. Uh, King County also had a website or unincorporated where you could report it. I have no idea if that was effective in any way, shape or form. Uh, their rule is different that the fire marshal has to do all fireworks investigations. And I don't think there's that many fire marshals, so I don't know that how that worked out for them, but. Does that answer your question? It it does. Uh, I I'm chuckling because I I I'm pretty sure the fire marshal saw all those calls and was just like, well, that sounds like it's gonna be a long time. Uh, but I was just curious because I'm, I was just wondering if like twenty-one calls was twenty-one individual people calling in? Or if it was maybe sixteen individual people and some of them called twice. So just curious on that. I can research that if that's something like. No, I'm sorry. Thank you.
All I can say is my immediate neighborhood was quieter.
It was the the cul-de-sac behind us every year and it doesn't stop, doesn't stop, never stops. Two A M, three A M. And when I used to work retail and had to be to work at seven in the morning, it was not fun having to stay awake and not get any sleep. And I just. I don't think anything that happens is gonna stop.
Well, I will say I was in California till July third. They don't mess around. They're, no one's doing it. This is clearly. The a cultural community situation. It's, it is getting hotter. The fact that we just had a climate survey, we're talking about things we can do to cool. The city down. And this is in the same conversation. It it doesn't make sense to my brain. This is the new normal. Deal with it. I dealt with it. I grieved. I missed my party. Too bad. The planet's changing.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah, and.
So, so if we're looking at. So there's four of us, I guess, that say leave it status quo. Yeah, so Jennifer, Beth, myself and Debbie say leave it status quo. So I guess we don't need to bring it back. We'll just leave it as is for now. But like Beth said, we can always revisit it at a future date. But you've made a very good point, Jennifer. We just finished the climate and with temperatures in the hundreds and very, very dry. I know it puts more work on you and your team, Adam, but uh, let's just leave it as is for now. Yes.
Can I ask, Paul, is there anything that we can do differently in our code that would make it? Easier. I and I don't know. I mean, that's not, maybe that's just a pitching you something we can think about. I don't know. I mean. If it, can it be a felony instead of a misdemeanor? Can we make it a felony? I don't know if that works. No, we can't.
We cannot make it a felony. I mean, the the issue, part of the issue with enforcement is. If if you had ten police officers and a hundred people shooting off fireworks, if I make an arrest. Even if I just write a citation, I have to spend a half hour to forty-five minutes documenting it with include. Uh, we're now body worn cameras and include uploading that, any photographs you take. Uh, identifying the person and then submitting the charges. And so that takes you out of service essentially for that forty-five minutes. So you're gonna be able to, an officer could reasonably cite four or five people in a shift. Uh, working just fireworks. So it doesn't include any of the other calls. So we usually only have two uh that you're looking at the possibility of us citing. Between five and ten people if there's no other calls. So the enforcement is just impossible no matter how you do it. Even if it's a fine, which is a little bit easier for us to work, uh, those can be more like fifteen minutes. Uh, like a ticket, but either way, you're looking at a very limited amount of uh enforcement. With with the amount of people that we could possibly have.
And that's whether it's a modified or a straight ban.
Correct. It it doesn't make any.
Because you have, then if it's modified, then you have to decide if the firework that went off was actually banned or if it was allowed.
Correct.
Any other comments or things, Joe?
So this this will be where I leave it at. Uh, my biggest issue when we banned them is we, if, like we said, it was an all or nothing. So those little things that just glow in the glow when you light them and spin and kids like them and they are like strobes are banned. And those, light those in the middle of the street, the closest they go is about three feet in a circle. We banned poppets, which are just basically pieces of paper with. Smallest amount of a powder in it to go off. We have banned, we have made misdemeanors out of the smallest possible things for fireworks. Yes, I I agree. Some of these things are loud and they're obnoxious and I found my dog quivering under blankets in the house. I found my cats under beds in the house. But some of the things that we outright banned, to me is ridiculous and why I think we should have some modifications to this. To allow certain things because. It doesn't make sense. Now, I don't think Adam or his team are gonna cite anybody for carrying around a box of poppets. But that you can't even buy them in the city at Walmart. Well, you can't buy them at Walmart. I saw them there this year.
Store has the poppets.
Yeah, but they're banned in the city of Covington. You can buy them, but you can't use them. And it's a misdemeanor to even possess them in your car in the city. And that's why I think um modifications should be done. Um, that was a question I asked in twenty nineteen. And it was not, it was one of those things that it has to be, it was all or nothing at that time. So. I hope we do come back and make some changes because some of the things we banned, I'll say, I'll say it loud and proud. Some of the things we banned was stupid. Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Need anything from us, Regan?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you. Next eh, and thank you, counsel for that uh discussion. Next is a new item, new business item number five. Consider authorizing the city manager to accept a grant award with the Puget Sound Regional Council. For the what right of way funding for the SR five sixteen and Covington Way, C I P one zero six three. And SR five sixteen, one eighty-fifth. One ninety-second C I P eleven twenty-eight projects. Mr. Linska, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, counsel. Uh, I'll oversimplify this. Uh, we're requesting the the city spend four hundred nineteen thousand.
Dollars in town center reserves.
Four hundred nineteen thousand dollars in Town Center Reserve Funds. To get two point one five million dollars in federal funding.
So moved.
Oh, I hear a second.
Oh, second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize city manager to accept a PSRC grant. For right of way acquisition funds in the amount of two million, one hundred and fifty three thousand, two hundred and thirty three. Dollars and allocate four hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixteen. Thousand dollars in the two thousand twenty four budget from the Town Center Reserve Fund as a local match. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Can I get that type of return on investment on my on my checking account, please? Yes, we're getting two point one million dollars and we have to spend less. Spend four hundred thousand, sure, let's do it.
Beth, would you like to speak to your second?
I just, it makes sense, what we're trying to accomplish.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Alright, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to accept a. Puget Sound Regional Council Grant for Right Of Way Acquisition Funds in the amount of two million, one hundred and fifty three thousand, two hundred and thirty three dollars. And allocate four hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars in the two thousand twenty four budget from the Town Center Reserve Fund. As a local match, all those in favor state aye. Any opposed, motion passed, Bob, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Next is new business item number six, the two thousand twenty three second quarter financial reports, Casey.
I'm not sure I can beat Bob there with. I'm not the best at scrolling and talking, so please give me a nudge if I am not paying attention, especially since Christine is online, so. I'm gonna skip the first page and just go straight to the second page and talk to you about property taxes. So through second quarter, the city has collected about one point seven million dollars, uh our collections are up by about seven point two percent over last year. Um one thing I will mention is our assessed value is expected to drop about nine point four percent this year um for our twenty twenty four collections. But as you're seeing that if you're reading that in the news and it says that our assessed value is going down, I just wanna remind you that our levy rate will then go up to kind of compensate for it. So there's not gonna be a big change in your your taxes that you'll see, so just wanna mention that in case you see that in an article or something. For real estate excise taxes. Through second quarter, our collections are just almost four hundred and fifty thousand, we're almost at fifty percent of budget, right where we should be. We reduced our budget quite a bit this year in anticipation of some of those higher mortgage rates and things like that that we were seeing. And we knew that we were gonna be seeing some reduced collections, you can see we're at fifty eight point four percent less than twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two was a great year for us. Uh hard to compare, but we've had nine new home sales, ninety eight existing home sales and three lot sales through second quarter. But what I will, what I will mention is we just received um July's REIT um information that we will receive in August, there's a one month lag. And we had a, we had a great month, so we received just uh this last month, a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars, there was a a big lot sale. That went through, so that will really bring our numbers up and bring us above budget where we should be this time of year, so that's great. It's some some headway there. For real estate, um or excuse me, retail sales and use taxes, our total collections are two point nine million. Just barely over budget for this time of year, fifty point five percent. Um our retail has been coming in less at thirty three point five percent lower, construction was less by five point one percent. Food services was actually up five point nine percent, all other categories increased by five point five percent. Again, we just received some um some additional information for our May sales tax that we receive in July, so again, two month lag on that. We finally saw saw an increase of one point eight percent over last year, so we're seeing those numbers come up a little bit. And I've been um reporting, if you remember that some of our our top five retailers have been down month over month, they're finally back up, so. Um our top five retailers are up between two and twelve point three percent, so we're seeing some some increases there. For utility taxes. I know, we're gonna have to take that down, it was hard for me to take that off this time, though.
You don't need it anymore.
No, true, I don't.
Um so for our utility taxes, uh this is a really stable revenue for us, not a lot of change year over year. Um but it's up a hundred and eighty thousand or thirteen point eight percent over second quarter twenty twenty two. And our total collections are just about one point four nine million. Alright, so for general fund. Our operating revenues are at forty six point six percent and just a reminder, since we only receive our first half of property taxes, that's kind of where we anticipate being this type of time of year. We'll see, receive the other half of our property taxes at the end of the year. Uh this is an increase of seven hundred and fifty five thousand over twenty twenty two, so we are increased over last year. Our total expenditures are at twenty five point nine percent of budget and excluding transfers out, we're at four point eight million. And just if we wanna look at just a couple of departments, there's a few departments that are over the budget for this time of year, but there's good reason for it, so. For city council, you're at sixty eight point eight percent of budget and that's just because you have some one time things that happen at the beginning of the year, dues, memberships, those type of things. They'll even out now for the rest of the year. For central services, same thing, we have our WCA insurance payments, um liability risk, those type of things, so that's a one time at the beginning of the year. And then it'll even out for the rest of the year. The only other one was aquatics and it was at fifty one point five percent budget, just barely over, but well, I. What I will mention is our program revenues are coming in quite a bit higher for this time of year and I'll I'll talk about that in just a little bit here. Republic Works. For the street fund, our total operating revenues are at fifty one point three percent, so again, right where we expect to see ourselves. Uh the Comcast franchise fees, gas taxes, motor vehicle license fees. Are almost just right where the uh the budget should be at this time of year, they're almost fifty percent, so not a lot of concern in any of the major revenue sources that are in the street fund. For total expenditures, including transfers out, again, they're under budget for this time of year, forty eight point six percent. And then, oh, and then I will mention that the TBD sales tax collections began July first. So we'll start to see that extra sales tax come in for the street fund beginning in September because of that two month lag. And then for the swim fund, the to- total operating revenues are at seventy three point seven percent. Way over where they should be this time of year, but that was because BPA paid their past due bills that they had outstanding, so we saw a nice little bump for the swim fund there. Total expenditures excluding transfers out, we're at fifty one point nine percent, so again, just right where we expect to see it this time of year. For development services. Uh the revenue is still down in this department, it's at thirty six point seven percent of budget. It's it's definitely an increase over second quarter of twenty twenty two, um the number of permits that have come in for single family residences are at fifteen. Compared to sixteen in twenty twenty two, so pretty comparable there. For all permit categories, there was two hundred and four permits issued this year compared to two hundred and forty eight in twenty twenty two. Um for total operating expenditures, it also is under budget at thirty two point three percent. So as the revenues are down, their expenditures are down also, so that helps compensate for that. But what I will mention is you might have already seen this in the weekly update that Regan put out, is that in summer and early fall, they have. Seventy six lots in the pipeline, fifty five town homes. Uh two hundred and seventy one apartment units in Covington Commons.
That's a touch and go.
Okay. And over three hundred and fifty four thousand square feet of warehouse space. So it's definitely some things in the pipeline and hopefully we'll see those revenues start to pick up. So for aquatics, recreation and cultural arts, uh the aquatics revenue, like I mentioned, um the expenditures are over just a little bit, but their revenues are up quite a bit. So they're up seventy seven point three percent of budget, so about twenty seven percent higher than we would expect this time of year. Uh recreation and cultural arts is just a little bit below budget at forty five point five percent. And operating expenditures for aquatics again came in at fifty one point five and recreation and cultural arts came in at forty four point seven. What I will mention is that for both athletics and recreation and aquatics, we are um. Finally exceeding our pre COVID numbers, so all of our counts are higher than twenty nineteen for. All all the activities that take place in for both programs. For cash and investments. Cash and investments um currently have a total of forty four point nine million, it's an increase over twenty twenty two of over ten million. The largest gainers are the general fund, the CIP fund and the swim funds. And just for the general funds, um it was timing of for our second distribution of ARPA funds that we received, so that's why it looks like. There's such a a big gain there. And then the CIP funds, um the balance that is sitting in there, the five point two million dollars. Is um the interfund loans that are sitting there to help with the cash flow for some of the major projects for CIP eleven twenty seven and then the two hundred and fourth connector. Um and then the swim um is the BPA payments that came in, so that's the kind of the big cash increase there. And then for our local government investment pool, we've earned five point two one percent, so definitely some real money coming in in interest income this year. And we currently have uh thirty four point eight million invested there, and then we also have investments that are outside of the LGIP at three point nine million. And my computer died, so we might be staying on this screen, I apologize. I'll I'll just keep going, you guys can see it on your screen, can't you? Okay, so for the capital investment program fund, the city has collected a hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars. In GMA mitigation fees, those are our traffic impact fees and fifty eight thousand dollars in the park fees and park impact fees. And I won't go over all the projects, but you can definitely see our SR five sixteen, we've definitely seen a lot of activity there, the two hundred and fourth connector. And then we'll start to see some more activity in Ethan's projects for Founder's Park and Jenkins Creek Park uh taking place this year. As far as the bonds, there's no activity taking place in our uh twenty sixteen refunded bonds. And we just made our second to last payment on our Public Works Trust Fund loan, so we have one more outstanding for next year. And then our total balance of traffic impact fees are um one point four million. And then our interfund loans, this is something that um I need to report on quarterly and what we currently have approved is six point one million. We've currently transferred almost four point four, we've got a balance of one point seven. And we have for the uh CIP twelve oh one and eleven twenty seven projects. We anticipate those will be um paid or will be paid, excuse me, CIP twelve oh one, we hope to pay this year. Pay that interfund loan back, eleven twenty seven will continue through next summer while they still need it. And then uh ten nineteen will be paid next year and ten twenty nine, we're hoping to pay this year, so those will be paid back. And then I did have a slide for you to show you what the new reserve balances were, but I guess I will just save that for you. Uh any questions?
So now that your computer's died, you can't go back to page three, but oh, you have it on paper.
Yeah, I got it.
So. Thank you for the explanation on on why council was up, can you, can you tell us what caused the decrease in law enforcement expense?
That's just timing, we haven't, we didn't receive the the bill yet, we just paid it in July.
Okay, I thought maybe Adam took a big cut and paid.
We usually get it in June, they they time it with our property tax payment, so as soon as we get our property tax payments, then they send us the big bill. Uh because they know we'll have the cash. Uh but we didn't receive it until July this year.
Alright, thanks, and then I missed the dollar amount you listed for the balance in the traffic improvement. Or impact fees, and I can't remember where it was on here.
Sure, um we currently have one point four million, uh it's, they're all obligated towards our current projects. Um so we use it pretty much for cash flow and to fill any gaps that they have um matching funds, anything like that that they need.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody else? Alright, Casey, thank you very much for a great update, appreciate it. Uh moving on to new business item number seven, consider appointments to the planning commission, council wishes to take action tonight. We did one interview tonight.
I moved to appoint Steve Bossom to fill position number one on the planning commission with a term expiring August thirty first, twenty twenty seven. Second.
Okay, been moved in second to appoint Steve Bossom to fill position number one. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Um I just, I really appreciated his um his balance between. Um looking at facts, looking at details, but also um I to see if. And analyzing if what we're doing is working or if we need to change course or um just his approach to to. Um to topics and um. Think he had a uh. He had a a scenario, he talked about the road to Abilene story and it was about a family going out to dinner, no one really wanted to and they were all miserable in the end. Because it was hot, sweaty and basically it's just no holds barred, we need to be honest about what we think is going on in the situation and I I appreciate that candidness and. It's very clear it would come across in a very professional and compassionate manner, so I think that would be um. A great position for him.
Thanks, Beth, Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, well, first I just wanna say, I just am continued to be overwhelmed by the. Quality of our residents that come forward and want to be on these commissions. So. Steve um also shared with us that he eh as a pilot instructor and and a leader. He facilitates direction, he's level headed, um and he's data driven without emotion. And I think that's really critical in a team environment. He enjoys being on the inside and wants to dispel myths, which he thinks, you know, maybe if people had a better understanding of what the commissions do, that would be better. Um and as an ambassador, that would be one of the things he would wanna do is just educate people on why changes are made. I think he's a very solid candidate candidate and will be a great commissioner.
Thanks, Debbie, anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to appoint Steve Boston to fill position number one on the planning commission with a term expiring August thirty first, two thousand twenty seven. All those in favor state aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Steve. Next is the consider appointments to the Covington Economic Development Council, council wishes to take action tonight.
Yes, I would like to move um that we appoint Dom and Deep Katra to. Fill a position on the Covington Economic Development Council with term expiring July thirty one, twenty twenty five.
Do we have a second?
My second.
Okay, then moved and seconded to appoint. Domon Deep Katra to fill a position on the Covington Economic Development Council with a term expiring. July thirty first, two thousand twenty five, Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, um what I really appreciated about Dom and Deep was that she had really great feedback. I am not gonna say all the time, but a lot of times we get, oh, everything is great, you guys are great, staff is great. And it's not that she said anything was bad, but she had just. Constructive feedback for um ways to improve things, one of our ideas was. Uh like a summit of commissions and I was thinking, even if we didn't wanna do something like that, we could just make sure all commissions know when there's another. Joint meeting with council. You know, anyone's invited, but just kind of like pointing it out so they can kind of see what the other commissions are doing, anyway, that was one of our ideas and. Also uh encouraging more participation and attendance at uh meetings, so. Uh just overall, great feedback from someone, um like I said, we don't usually get really direct ideas and. I love that, so I highly recommend her.
Thank you, Jennifer. You were both tied, who would like to be the second?
No, you go.
Alright.
Would you like to speak to your second, Beth?
Oh, just that, she's she's done a lot of great work and been a part of a lot of great initiatives that um. You know, I having her there to help see these things um forward in the future, I think would be fantastic and um. And she also brought up the idea of trying to collaborate with other cities and and while we need to do what we need to do within our city limits. Um working with our neighbors and bringing them in so that we can have a collective approach.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to appoint. Domon Deep Katra to fill a position on the Covington Economic Development Council with a term expiring July thirty first, two thousand twenty five. All those in favor state aye. Aye, any opposed? Congratulations, Domon. That concludes all of our new business, um future agenda items, just to remind everybody, the next council meeting, August twenty second. Is canceled, so our next official council meeting will be on September twelfth. And with that, just a reminder that on August thirty first of this year. We have been been a city for twenty six years, it'll be our birthday on August thirty first. Uh with that, is council have any other future agenda items they would like to see in the future, Beth? Uh, with that, does council have any other future agenda items they would like to see in the future? Beth?
Um, I, I propose, um, that we take a look at, uh, either a study session might be the best way to do it rather than a, at a council meeting. Getting some more information on code enforcement in our city, what the city can or cannot do. If there's any changes, anything we need to stop, start or continue. I continue to hear about certain properties that are in violation. And unless we know really how to address these moving forward. And if nothing else, we're more educated on how we can communicate with, with, uh, the public when they have concerns, so.
Is there council consensus to have this at a future study session? An update from our code enforcement?
Yeah, it would be an update and then maybe a collaborative, if there's any other suggestions.
I'm good with that. So there's consensus to bring that at a future council meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, code compliance is, is what we'll, we'll do. And so that, that sounds great. We, Selena and I spoke a little bit earlier about this and so I think it's a great opportunity, so we'll try to get it scheduled as soon as we're able.
Yeah, I don't think we've had an update from code compliance in seven or eight years, so it's been a while. So, thank you. Okay.
And I would, uh, i- if you want just an update on what's happening, we can do that, but I guess I'm understanding it a little bit different, more like an education piece. And what can we do if anything differently? Is that kind of what we're looking at?
Yeah, and, and that might even drive us to make decisions that we want to change.
Right.
That we want to, uh, not, not at that meeting, obviously, but, um, it might fuel a conversation for.
Yeah.
Changes or something like that.
Okay, you're great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to council staff comments. Adam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, I think I might have mentioned this earlier, body cameras, all officers in Covington should have those by the end of the month. Um, they're a great tool, um, and we're looking forward to using them. Uh, they should actually make our interactions with citizens a little more documented so that, uh, it's very obvious what really happened, uh, cause sometimes you have wildly different opinions. Uh, secondly, uh, drug enforcement will begin on the fourteenth, a meeting with the chief, uh, Maple Valley and Black Diamond. See how we can pool our resources to assist each other, uh, and begin doing enforcement. Um, part of that enforcement will be jail is obviously an option, but, uh, people will have the option of going to diversion. Should there be a bed, there is a uh, facility in Seattle that we will refer people to and we will take people there and drop them off. Uh, that facility is a three-day, uh, treatment facility, um, which would would comply with state law to remove any kind of charge. So they have to complete the three days. If they don't, they have opportunities later, but um, it's not going to be as advantageous for them not to if they choose to try that. So it's not a lockdown facility. They don't have to stay, but in order to get credit and not get charged, you need to spend the three days there. Um, like I said, the other option would be jail, um, and in some cases we would just cite and release, but um, though that's will be how we begin to enforce it starting next week.
Thanks, Adam.
Yep.
Ethan?
Yeah, just a couple notes since, um, we have some events that will happen in, um, before the next council meeting, we have our continuing, um, uh, concerts in the park, uh, which also, uh, there are now movies after that, so that's a lot going on on Friday nights. And then Kids Fest this Saturday. And then I think there's a pickleball court. My computer died, so I can't remember the exact date, but that's happening. And, uh, that's really all I have today. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Don?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Selena?
Thank you for your time this evening. I have nothing more to report on.
Thanks, Selena. Casey?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Council. Um, I'm afraid to jinx it, but since I haven't got the letter in my hand yet, but I think the first part of the audit is over. And, um, no findings, no exit items, no management letters, so.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
There's no executive session tonight and I have no further comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Regan?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Regan. Krista?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Christina dropped off?
I think her connection must have.
Yeah, she's.
Just like a minute ago, so.
Okay. Um, we'll watch if she comes back, but Beth?
Um, just thank you so much to the city staff for all that you do and that national night out. I mean, it's always fun to see Public Works and coming out with their vehicles. The kids love it. It's fun. And I know that it, you know, makes for long days for some of, some of y'all, so. Um, I know the residents appreciate it and, um, thank you so much for, for continuing to support that program.
Thanks, Beth. Debbie?
Also, National Night Out I thought was successful. Um, those that I attended were very appreciative of of our coming out, the police department coming out, um, fire department and Public Works, so um, heard a lot about what Beth brought up on the parking and parking enforcement, code enforcement. So look forward to that further discussion. One suggestion might be instead of all of us getting the swag bags of stuff to take out and because when I got to, um, I started at my own neighborhood and I put mine out, but when I got to other neighborhoods, I was following another council member and the table was already full. Um, so I just ended up bringing a lot back to Krista. Maybe we can coordinate that a little better next year with whoever's first on on the schedule for that neighborhood brings the items. Just a thought. Um, anyway, I have nothing else.
Thanks, Deb. Jennifer?
Um, I was wondering where the three hundred and fifty-four thousand square foot warehouse is going?
There's actually two of them. So if you're familiar with the Rainier Wood Recycling or the Itting's site that we have just south. Right. So there's three parcels in there. Um, one of them is WDL Land, one of them's Apex eighteen and one of them's SR eighteen. The Apex eighteen, they're the kind of the back porch parcels. The SR eighteen project is moving forward. That's a warehouse project. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. Um, but they're in engineering review right now and plan to go out to construction as soon as they get those engineering plans completed. And then the Apex eighteen also against kind of the back edge of the, the property there. That's another warehousing, um, project that is really close to getting construction permits to go out to start construction.
So, uh, you know, again, I was just in California and there is a ton of struggle in that area uh, with warehouses popping up everywhere. Um, it's causing an even bigger issue with the lack of, uh, affordable housing. It's causing major issues with traffic and congestion as these, um, semis are in and out of what traditionally are suburb or neighborhood communities. Um, and so that was like the talk at all the family events and everything was this kind of crisis that these towns and cities have encountered. And I'm curious from a planning standpoint, if there's ways that we can be proactive in mitigating the amount of warehouse space that our city is may, you know, be vulnerable to. I'll just say it that way because it usually is not a ton of employment and economic development opportunities.
Yeah, and I can answer that really quickly. And if you need more information, I can definitely come back with more. Um, right now in our downtown zoning code, there's permitted uses that are allowed and you've got about four or five zoning districts. So you've got mixed commercial, town center, mixed housing office, general commercial, and then we consider the R, I think it's a R eighteen zone that's along Wax Road, part of our downtown. Um, area that has zoning applied to it. Um, the only zone that allows warehousing of this scale is your general commercial zone. And so if you can think of the city and, and I would bring up a map if I could, that is, the general commercial zone is everything on the south side or southwest-ish side of Covington Way, so across from Costco. And then that general commercial zone wraps around Covington Way to where it intersects with two seventy-second. And so there's kind of this little swath area in there that we consider general commercial. That's the only space that this warehousing of this scale could be located. Um, oftentimes and why the Itting's site is very ripe for this type of use is because that is one of the largest last pieces of part, one of the few last large pieces of parcels that we have in our downtown unless you go to aggregate, right? And so when the warehousing folks look for properties, they're looking for anything. I mean, Regan and I fill these constantly. You know, they're looking from anywhere to five acres to fifteen acres to twenty acres. And once these two projects go in, that level of acreage unless someone aggregates, won't exist in Covington. Um, so I hear you in the sense of that concern about traffic. And through the project review, we evaluate that. So we look at what those impacts are with traffic. They are going to pay a very large traffic impact fee as a result of that. Um, but it is a permitted use within that zone, so we can do as much as we can to mitigate that. Um, and a lot of what we've talked about with Bob left, um, and I know Dawn's online, so he might say more to this, but a lot of this also coincides with when we think about those traffic concerns mainly, it coincides a lot with the capital projects that we have slated. So improvements at two seventy-second and Covington Way, um, limiting, limiting, um, truck access up one sixty-eighth and one sixty-fifth, right? Pulling them more on the outskirts of the city. They're wanting to get to the on and off ramps quickly. That's their intention.
I think that's already a congestion nightmare.
Yeah, and we've actually told them and Wash Dot had kind of responded that maybe like during construction of these facilities that they might be able to open up something off of SR eighteen or Highway eighteen to allow for construction traffic. We've also said to them, hey, you should just ask maybe if you can get your own dedicated, dedicated ramp, but that's not a conversation we, we can force. That, that would be a wash.
How do we know how much traffic? I mean, if this is an Amazon warehouse, that's very different than an Ashley Furniture Warehouse.
Right, right. And, and we don't know that this isn't an Amazon warehouse because these often.
Absolutely. Yeah, again, my San Antonio, they're everywhere, everywhere.
Yeah, um, well, we rely on the, the ITE manual, so the traffic manual that's adopted uniformly by everywhere in the United States and they've got trends as far as traffic impacts. And so we use those as our baselines. Um, things that we've also done to mitigate because we haven't had that kind of traffic in Covington, right? Like we haven't been at they, like the Kent Valley experiences, right? So then we also kind of look at what are those impacts based on like axles of a truck? You know, uh, a delivery truck has a different impact than let's say a semi, or if you're pulling a, I don't have all the terminology, but like two containers, you know, those types of things. So we do look at that and evaluate that. We also offset that a little bit with the fact that this has operated as a high trafficked area, also with dump trucks, semis and things that are currently going out to that space right now. So, um, it's not a perfect evaluation. Traffic, traffic is, is, you know, kind of a science in its own. And so we do the best we can with that information and the data that's presented to us, but they, we don't take it lightly, I should say. I don't know if Dawn has anything he wants to add to that.
I, I don't know that you want me to add anything to that. At this, I, I think Selena does great. I, I, I always like Selena because she's very, uh, she loves traffic engineering and so, uh, I always love, uh, cause she, she's spot on with all of that. And so I don't think I really need to add any to that, um, uh, just knowing that we do uh, take it quite serious, especially when it gets into these types of things of nuances of warehouses. We've even talked about the fact that, hey, you know, if you're saying that you're only doing this type of use and your impact fees and stuff are for that, we're making note of that. And if that's not the way it is, we're, we're coming back to you type thing. So we have had those discussions and stuff as well, uh, for that. So I'll leave it at that, but obviously happy to, uh, answer anymore if there's any more questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Anything else? Joe?
I almost forgot I hadn't done yet. Um, no, I just want to say National Night Out was great. I went to four neighborhoods. Uh, I got grilled on about the tree code and different, and what would the city can do with trees in one neighborhood. Funny thing was, I was in the neighborhood where a planning commissioner lived who helped write the tree code. So I was like, why are you asking me? The guy who wrote it's right there. And he didn't like that and he ran away from me. So, uh, but they, it was a good time. I got to meet some really good people in the city and I was, uh, I, I'm looking forward to next year's already. It's going to be, it's always a fun, fun event and you know, luckily this year didn't fall on Logan's birthday, so got to go.
Thank you, Joe. Um, I would like to thank council and Joe for, uh, covering for me when I refused myself. So thank you. Give you what, four minutes of fame there, Joe? Get that. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Um, and thank you, council, for excusing me, uh, the last meeting. I had a very good time away. Uh, so Covington days, I just want to reiterate what's, what's said at the last meeting that I really appreciate what staff did to make this a very successful event. Um, I enjoyed myself. I heard nothing but positive comments about the parade, the entire event. And, um, I really enjoyed the parade and the youth council, their wish they brought forward at the joint session that we had many months ago about the Covington Mystery Machine. And it sits right out there right now. And I just, I love it. So thank, I'm, I'm glad that we went forward with that. National Night Out was outstanding, um, had a great time. I could not make it to more than, uh, four locations. Uh, but it was, uh, and I appreciate council for being there and, and working with everybody and talking. Everybody that I talked to was very appreciative of that. And thank you, Adam and, and everybody that worked on that event. And then, uh, also Darren's presentation, uh, at the last council meeting. Uh, I watched the tape afterwards to, to, uh, hear what he had to say and I really pass on to Darren. I appreciate what he's doing. Um, that is all I have, so we're going to move into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Is there anybody in, there's nobody here in the building, so anybody online wish to address council at this time? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, I will call this meeting adjourned at eight forty-seven, nine forty-seven. I can't read the.